This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, calling to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for March 28th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. If we could all begin by standing and saying, "Pledge of Allegiance", please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. Okay. Get the agendas here. All right. Have a couple things for open time for the public. Robert, go ahead.
Robert Floyd, College Highway. I'm here as the Cemetery Commissioner. Years ago, the cemetery struggled to have the grass cut. The Cemetery Commission hired independent contractors, then we did it with the town, and back then independent contractors, back to the town, and we didn't have any money. And we couldn't cut it ourselves anymore, and we weren't funded. So the town logically believed that the town owns the land, therefore the grass. The grass grows. It's the town's responsibility to cut the grass. And from now on, or from those few years on, the Highway Department's been cutting the grass wonderfully. We had tree damage because of the last storm. Maybe a 25-foot-long branch came down over stones, very heavy, knocked down other branches, cedars on the north side of the cemetery. So applying that same logic, if it's the town responsibility to cut the grass, would one assume, presume, that it's the town's responsibility to take care of the trees? To prune them, to maintain them? We've asked for the money for years. We've been denied for years. So if we can't receive money as a commission to maintain the trees, then maybe it's not our responsibility, and we're naive to believe it was. Maybe it's the town's responsibility. Anyway, we're meeting tomorrow to figure out what to do immediately, but I just want to give some food for thought.
Good point, and I think we will have, as we're doing these budget hearings, so one of the ones that I would like to have come in, probably not, we've got meetings scheduled for Thursday, so it may be, let me not lie, then we have the Town Caucus, I think, so I think it would be April 6th.
Town Caucus is the Tuesday, next Tuesday.
April 6th would be the next budget meeting, and we were going to make a roster of who should come in at that time, and I had Cemetery Commission on my list to come in and talk about your budget anyway, so that can kind of fall into that.
Okay, is that the official evening for the Cemetery Commission to give their annual report?
No, this was just the budget.
Okay, may I have the date for that, so I can schedule it?
That's out on the bulletin board. I don't have.
Oh, okay, I'll find it. I'll find it, good. I'm tempted to walk by the bulletin board with so much going on.
On the town website, under the Select Board.
Yeah, under the Select Board section on the town website.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll let you know that, yeah. Can I, how's the, what's happening with the fence?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Town's too busy to help, so it can't be done.
So that must be in the same boat, then, right? Like, whose responsibility is to fix that? I mean, do you see that as a Cemetery Commission, though?
Yeah, one could make that argument, but we've been holding that umbrella over our head for our responsibility and believing in grants, and we need that purchase order placed for the water. But if we can't get the water purchase order placed for the piping, then I believe we don't have time to get helping to help us with this approach to the vendors for the fence. I believe I'm qualified because of my historic lifetimes in procurement, but this is tricky because it involves a budget that we don't have for it. We expect grants. We're certainly eligible for CPA funding, but our priority is the water piping. Once that's done, right behind that is the fence. And right now, this has been thrown in a lap of the trees, so.
So let's, let's assume that we'll pick some of this back up on the budget hearing meeting, which right now is April 6th, and we'll confirm that with you, but.
Sure, thank you.
Tentatively, anyway, what we're hoping to do. Okay, thanks, Robert. Yeah, Lucy.
Lucy Dolentown, 10 Strong Road. I'll be really quick. I just need the Select Board to sign the caucus warrant so it can be posted today, tonight. So Ed has that, and if he can sign it, I can take it from you right now, if possible, please.
And just let people know again, timing.
The caucus is next Tuesday, April 4th, at 7:00 PM, in this room, the first floor meeting room, 7 to 9. And nomination papers were due in today by 5:00 PM, and we had two people who did not return their papers. So, other than that, everyone else did, and they were good. So they will be put on the ballot, but if you want to nominate someone, you can nominate them on the floor next Tuesday. We need 25 registered voters to have a quorum.
Is it going to be in here?
Right in this room, yep.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
You'll get this in a minute. You can post that.
Thanks.
Come on up. Yep. Hi, Lisa, come on up.
Hi, my name's Lisa York, 81 Maple Street. Last week I was here, and actually, four weeks from tonight was the house burnt down that I'm still working, trying to see how we can change the training of the chief, the fire department. So I reached out to him after you guys suggested that I did, and he had said that he sent an email to you right after that fire requesting that we could meet, so the day after, almost four weeks ago, emailed you guys about setting something up. And when I asked the following week, you guys didn't seem to have any plan of.
We didn't have a plan at that time. We've been, what we were hoping to do, and what we have been talking about doing, is setting up a community meeting, and this would be sometime in April.
Yeah.
And that would include not just the fire department, but all the various departments that would be involved, from highway to police to planning.
Water.
Water zoning, as well as town residents that want to come and talk about how we can look at the situation in this town and where we can plan for the future. So that's, that's the goal, and we're trying to work out the logistics of when and where to actually do that.
Right.
And once we do, we'll let everybody know.
Okay, and so there's no chance of him being here to, at a meeting? Because he said he had emailed you.
I don't know what purpose that would solve. I mean, you've had a personal talk with him today, right? So you've, you've been able to ask him questions directly?
Yes. And I'm not quite sure. I think 2015 and something about a $20,000 report was created. I don't think it cost the taxpayers anything for that report, but it was in regards to decommissioning an engine or not putting the money into the engine. So I was just, and I think I might have asked this question last week, is when you did take either the tanker or the engine off of the fire department, did you notify the non-hydrent residents that the risk would have gone up?
I can't possibly ask that. All of us, this all predated any of us in terms of that timeframe.
Okay.
So I couldn't possibly say what the Select Board at that time did, or the fire chief at that point in time.
So is that moving forward?
There's no, I mean, there's no, people that have moved into town have, have decided to live where they're going to live, and I would assume that they have an idea of where their water source is or isn't. Is that not true, or? I mean, you know that where you lived, you're out of the hydrant zone, is all my point is, right? And other people know that. So I don't know if a letter went out to somebody to say, "Hey, we don't have a tanker anymore."
So moving forward, and since you got, you people, as Ed said, the buck stops with you, I asked about being commissioners, and you seemed confused. I'm wondering, moving forward, if something like that happens, can you notify residents or a risk assessment? Because one engine down, I mean, it was, it was, you know, the weather was not this nice a month ago.
And I think last week, if you had a chance to look at it, was it last, last week, last Thursday, the fire chief came and talked about his, his budget request, and in there, he was talking about the history of that tanker and the, the pumper truck that has been offline, because we were told to take it offline by the state, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay, John?
So just to clarify a couple of things, under Mass General Law, that's where you find fire commissioners. It only applies in cities. This is a town. We don't have commissioners. Fire commissioners exist when there's a mayor.
Okay.
So, which is why a Select Board member wouldn't reference that title, if you go back into the Mass General Law. Secondly.
I must have misread it.
No, because it's, it's written in Old English, so.
Yeah, it's fine.
It would be common, but the other thing is, this town currently has a strong fire chief.
Oh, yes.
The fire chief, the fire chief can put an apparatus on the road, take it out of service, do whatever the individual wants to do without Select Board authority. Select Board only has oversight over the budget. And I think what the Chair is trying to accomplish is, is instead of having just the fire chief stand alone, who is less than 90 days from retirement, up there putting together a fact-finding situation, where we bring in the wire department, where are the, the hydrant lines, where are they not, where are we vulnerable? What's the, almost creating some sort of master plan and treat it as an educational process at the same time, which would be eye-opening.
The educational plan.
As we move forward to find a new fire chief.
Right.
I believe the study, and if, if we can ask the town administrator to have the fire chief forward that to us, or at least me, I'd like to see it, if everyone else has seen it. I believe the study was centered around whether or not to have full-time ambulance service, or outsource the ambulance service.
I think it's more focused on EMS and.
So I just, I want to get the report, and let's put it in the public venue, so everybody can see it.
I don't think, I didn't hear the word ambulance in that, but.
Have you seen the report?
Uh, no, I was talking to the chief.
So if, when we get it, we can provide you with a copy of it as well.
Since, since you mentioned he's 90 days from retiring, what have you done to fill that spot?
We're working on that this evening.
I haven't even seen anything.
We're talking about that toast on the agenda for this evening, so.
And we have been talking about it for the past 45 days.
Renee, question?
I just wanted to clarify something. You had mentioned that you had reached the chief at our suggestion because you wanted to talk about better training. I just wanted to be 100% clear that there was no, at no time has the Select Board or the fire chief or anybody said that the cause of the fire was because of anything that the fire department had done. So we're asking for statements from everyone that was there, including other towns, highway department, police department, so that we can determine exactly what played a role in things happening the way they did. But I just want to be 100% clear that at no time have we said, or anybody said, that the cause of the fire or anything had to do with the lack of training, okay?
Correct, and maybe better is not update, rather, working with the, where they can draft, the ponds that they can draft and practice that.
Yeah, there's a, there's a long list of requirements they have for training.
Yes.
Which the chief has shared with the Cost Efficiency Committee, and it's, it's pages long of the requirements that the firefighters have to go through.
Yeah.
But in terms of some other practical things that could be added to that, that's a discussion that's worth having, and I think that's something that I would hope could come out of our forum when we have this committee meeting.
100%, yeah.
Because again, it wouldn't just be what's happening on the fireside, but what do we need to do about the roads, or what do we need to do about zoning, or what do we need to do if, you know, if there are going to be houses way out?
Right, right.
How do we, how do we handle this?
Because I guess the development went up there, and he was really pushing for a Cistern.
Cistern.
Cistern or.
C-I-S-T-E-R-N, cistern, receptacle for water.
He really wanted it to be up there to save the development, and no one, he couldn't push it because it wasn't on the books, so hopefully that'll get on the books.
So those are the kinds of suggestions that we would want to talk about, and say, "Okay."
But those houses have been there for years.
Well, okay, true. I don't know what to tell you, but we got to start somewhere, and this is, you know, this is, you know, this unfortunate incident is maybe where we, at least gets the impetus going, and we will do that. So I think the idea is to really try to, you know, put some heads together at this community forum and say, "Okay, it's not just the fire, it's all sorts of different things that go into the whole puzzle of living in a rural community in Southampton with, I'm not even sure how many houses are beyond the end of the hydrant district." And that's one of the questions we will find out and explore together at this meeting.
So those answers will be?
That's the goal of having this community meeting.
Asked then, or answered then?
It's going to be a, a community discussion. I'm not going to have all the answers. We're going to have people there that will talk about it from their departments and suggest what needs to be done. There are things that are not in place, I'm sure, from, whether it's training, or zoning, or planning, or whatever. Maintenance of the road, all of that has to be up for discussion, and that's the idea. So that's about all we can say until we fine-tune the agenda and figure out how we can manage this meeting, where it's going to be located, and what date.
Right, and you had mentioned you don't even know how many houses are outside the hydrant.
I do not.
Correct.
Imagine the water department knows that, though.
My question was, is that going to be a question answered?
Yes.
Answered that day?
I misunderstood you. The water department will be invited. They should be the ones that have the idea to know where those are. They know where the water lines are. I assume they have an ability to figure out where all the hydrants are in town.
So you know the month, not the date yet?
It's going to be April. We don't have a date yet or a specific location. It's going to be maybe too small to have it here, so we might figure out where else to have it. So we will be deciding that and doing that within the next week or 10 days, and letting people know when it's going to be, okay?
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? I've got one thing to read from Tammy Walunas, from the Southampton Historical Society. And this is, she's the Chair, and asked that we read it because she couldn't be here tonight. She was planning on being here, but her plans had changed, so the Southampton Historical Society is meeting, they're having a meeting tomorrow night, 29th, at 6:30 at the Edwards Library, where there's going to be a Celebrate Southampton meeting, and the full agenda can be found on the town's mytown.govpage. Any organizations or clubs or groups that want a booth in the area for the, or in the area should be there, looking for volunteers to help for an hour or two on August 11th and 12th, and starting to collect any raffle donations that people would like to make. So again, this is our weekend for Celebrate Southampton, which has been our annual picnic of sorts, a community get-together at Conant Park. We've had it renovated, I guess renovated rejuvenated, rather is the right word, over the last two or three years post-COVID, and it's really taken on a, a great level of attraction, I guess, for people, both in-town and out-of-towner. So again, an organizing meeting tomorrow night at the library at 6:30. Anybody who's interested should plan on showing up. Renee, do you have something? Okay, all right, anybody else? Any, any other open time? Okay, all right, thanks for that. All right, so we have one, one main event to start with the meeting tonight. We have a presentation from Bartholomew &amp; Company regarding the town's investment policy, and we have before us, and I'm not sure who's going to be the lead, but we have three people here, and I'm just going to pick out the cards as I see them, Charles Patterson, Susan Kelly, and Kathleen Galwaki. Okay, so welcome. Thank you for coming, and feel free to come on up to the mic, and if you're going to tag team, or whatever you're going to do, so that's, that's fine. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, citizens of Southampton. My name is Chuck Patterson. I'm Chief Operating Officer for Bartholomew &amp; Company. We manage the town's trust funds and OPEB, other post-employment benefits. Something about who we are, we are a Worcester-based firm with about 30 employees. We manage about 270 municipal entities here in the Commonwealth for about $2.4 billion in municipal monies. Overall, the company manages about $4 billion. What we do is we determine what is the most beneficial asset allocation for each set of money. Most towns have three different sets of money. You have your general fund, which is your operating fund, you have your trust fund stabilization and CPA, and then you have your OPEB, all with separate risk tolerances. Okay, who I am personally, I am the past Treasurer of the Town of Shrewsbury, Mass, for 14 years. I'm also past President of the Mass Collector Treasurers. My colleague here, Sue, is past President of the Mass Collector Treasurers and former Treasurer Collector for the Town of Lee. The reason why I state those facts are, we really believe in the education of our Treasurers. Particularly now, we're here in our industry, as we're all seeing, so many of us are retiring. So we really believe in the education of our Treasurers. I've been teaching at the Mass Collector's School probably for 40 years, 30 years, and we believe, and I believe our colleagues believe, that we are the subject matter expert. Matter of fact, I was on the phone with an attorney that was going to the State House to talk about, one of your questions was talking about prudent investor. So being around as long as we have, I get calls all the time, my staff get calls all the time, all right, what do we do? What law does this pertain to? So then what you have in before you that we sent was what we provide to our Treasurers on an annual basis. What we try to do is come to all of our towns twice a year, and more often, if the Treasurer or the Boards, whether it be yourselves, Finance Committee, OPEB Committees, we're here to be a resource and a partner with all of the committees. So the form that you see before you is a quick summary of what we provide every June. We are now back out on the, seeing our clients, thank God, in person again, doing the next review. So what we try to do is do a review tying back to your fiscal year, and then tying out to the calendar year. And we go calendar year, in particular for your OPEB. So what you'll see is a summary of what I just went over, who are, who we are. Who's our business partners? Okay, we are an independent investment advisory company out of Worcester, as I stated. Our broker dealer is Commonwealth Financial Network. They are out of Waltham, Mass. They are the largest independent broker dealer in the country. All of the town's funds are held at National Financial Services, which is a subsidiary of Fidelity. So the reason why we go over that is to provide and let you know that your money is in one area, we're in another area, so there's some comfort there. We cannot provide statements ourselves. Compliance does not allow that, so everything must run through the broker dealer. In this presentation, you'll see a market commentary, so we talk about the markets. A lot of things have happened over the last year, and in particular, this past week or so. So when we come out, Kathleen, and she'll come up and talk about performance. So that's a quick answer to your first question. How do we get paid? People in our industry get paid in two ways. You can buy a bond or a security at $99, and I'll put, we'll put it into your portfolio at $100, the $1 is a commission or markup. That's one way. We get paid based off of relationship. I'm sure you've all seen the TV commercials, "We get paid when you do well." What that means is, we look at the total relationship of the assets held, and then we charge you 55 basis points. So 100 basis points is 1%. And as the value of your account goes up, the fees go down, so the more money we manage, the less we charge. Okay? And that pays us, it pays the broker dealer, it pays your custodial fees, it pays all your ticket charges. It's all-inclusive, so you're not going to see, and the Treasurer is not going to see us, you know, sending another bill. Okay? Okay, your next question, what accounts can be invested? OPEB and trusts. Because as I said earlier, you have three sets of money. We manage two of them. Your OPEB falls under 203, so it goes into the account under 32B20, which the town has voted, and then it's invested under 203C, as in Charles. That is the prudent investor statute. What that means is you can invest in pretty much anything in the world, but we help the town and the Treasurer determine the asset allocation. And what that means is, you might hear the term 70/30, 60/40, 50/50. All that means is 70/30, there's going to be 70% of the account in equity, 30% in bonds. That's all it means. So in theory, bonds being safer. So in your OPEB account, we want to take on more risk. Kathleen will talk about what the risk tolerance is on the OPEB. So we, because the OPEB needs to grow. The more money and the more risks you take, in theory, your discount rate goes up and your liability goes down. It's that simple. Okay, when it comes time to talk about your trust funds, that is Chapter 4454. And you'll hear people refer to the legal list. The legal list is a list of securities provided by or maintained by the commissioner banks, and it spells out about 22 stocks. You own every stock on the list except for two, General Electric and Wells Fargo. Don't own General Electric because it's not paying a dividend any longer. So in your account, we want income, and we don't buy Wells Fargo because we don't want to have to have the Treasurer talk about, you know, "Well, how come you own that company that had all their problems?" So we take that off the table for our Treasurers. So that comment that I made earlier about meeting with one of the attorneys going to the state senate, state president yesterday, was to talk about having Treasurers in towns through a local option be able to invest their trust funds under the prudent investor statute. So you, right now, they're being invested on the legal list, but then now, through local option, if it's voted on down in Boston, they're thinking about putting in the outside section of the budget, because it was already debated last year. It made it through the House and got tied up in the Senate Ways and Means. So you can decide what you want to do there. How does the town access interest earned on certain accounts? On a monthly basis, monthly or quarterly? Quarterly. On a quarterly basis, and you'll see in the presentation we gave, we provide an Excel sheet that lists all the different accounts that we manage separately. So for instance, you had the cemetery in here, so we manage your cemetery perpetual care. We manage Conant Wildlife, Hazel Young Conservation, Noah Strong Library, Dorothy Conant, and some more library funds, various miscellaneous funds, Sheldon Academy Fund, CPA, ambulance stabilization, and currently, we have a line set up for the town stabilization, but we do not manage that at this time. So what ends up happening is, based off of Chapter 4454, we can pool all these assets into one big account and manage it accordingly. In that account, we have, as of June 30th, we had $1,828,000, and that's what you have in your presentation. So then, based off of the ownership in each of these accounts, that's how they receive their interest. If there's gains in the account, so if we buy something at a discount, and we hold it to maturity, there's a gain, then its proportion shares receives all the income, realize gains and losses in whatever the fees are. So it's one big pool, and it's allowed by state law. Okay? So once we send that to the Treasurer, then she would then post that into the general ledger, and then that's where it's there to be spent, how you spend the money. So for instance, say if you want to take money out of any one of these accounts, you go through the normal warrant process. The Treasurer then notify us and say, "I need to take money out of my cemetery perpetual care earnings account, and I need to reimburse my general fund." And that's all done internally through our office, where we will then send cash back to the town to reimburse, and vice versa. If all of a sudden you decide to send more money in through a town meeting vote into the, whatever, ambulance fund, town Treasurer would say, "Okay, I'm sending you $20,000, please add it to my ambulance stabilization." So that's how money goes in, how it goes out, and all of the interest is showing up on your general ledger. So Madam Chair, I think I got the first four bullets of your, before I turn it over to Kathleen.
Yeah. What I might suggest is that we take a.
I have some questions on that.
Take a, maybe just do this in stages, if that's okay, since it's fresh in our mind, what you've just said. We could have, you know, three or four questions, maybe, before we have Kathleen, and then on, if that's okay. John?
Chuck, you said right now we're at 55 basis points.
Yes.
That's based on the dollars that are currently committed?
Correct.
What is, what is the next tier?
At $2 million, it goes to, then it goes down by, every million dollars, it goes down by five basis points.
So are we looking at the trust funds as one group of money?
Total, good question, total relationship.
So isn't the cumulative between, how much is an OPEB right now?
300 and something thousand. So you're over $20,000. So you're over $2 million, so you're at 55. If it goes over $3 million, it'll go to 50.
Okay.
And then it continues to go down. I believe so simply, 20 millions at 20 basis points. So that would be out here, but otherwise, you're going 5 to 5 to 5.
Francine's goal, yeah.
It'd be nice to have that, right?
And then you said you currently don't have the stabilization. This may be a question for our treasurer. Where is the stabilization money, if it's not with you?
We have the ambulance stabilization.
The town stabilization.
The town-
Adams Community Bank.
Treasurer said Adams Community Bank.
Yeah, okay, good. And then just back on the interest for a second, because I know we've, talking to some of the committees in town that, you know, have an expense that they need. We're not going to pick on the cemetery folks tonight, just because Robert's here, but other ones, Park Department, for example, or others, who say, "Look, we've got this expense we have, but we've got these trust funds, but we can't spend them. We can only spend the interest." So I guess I've never been clear on how and when they actually can access their own interest, or do they, that interest stays all lumped together, is that right?
I don't know that that's a true statement, Chris, what you just said.
Okay, I'm not sure, but that's what I hear. So it's like, you know, and I don't know, just to clarify that a little bit more.
So certain, certain funds, when we, when you look at our sheet, it separates out principal and earnings. Okay? I'm going to stay with cemetery. For instance, when the cemetery takes money and for cemetery perpetual care, they cannot spend the principal.
Right.
But they can spend the earnings. Depending on, like, for instance, I'll say the Noah Strong Library.
Okay.
It says a $5,000 principal balance. That number came from previous administrations, previous treasurers. So if someone, the Noah Strong family, or possibly he or her, gave $5,000, and then it has earned $6,042.18. So if you believe that the principal is unexpendable, then you'd have $6,042. Stabilization, ambulance stabilization, you can spend the whole thing. So what you can spend really is dictated by the donor. And it's, we don't know that. Having been around long enough, I know that a lot of those source documents may not be found.
Yeah.
And it's a research project to try to find them.
But going off your report, the second column-
Yep.
Beginning principal.
Yep.
You would write, based on the information you have, you interpret that to be the restricted portion of those funds?
I, based off of the knowledge that I have, I would concur.
Right.
But that doesn't mean this is correct in the sense that it's coming from the town record.
Right.
So at some point in time, someone said, "This is principal." You know, you would then have to go back to the original bequest to determine, was that really-
The third column represents the monies that are available for expenditure.
Correct.
The net income?
Net earnings.
Beginning earnings?
Beginning earnings, beginning earnings.
So those are the funds that are available to be spent?
Well, based on the documentation, when this fund was created, God knows who the treasurer was at the time, it said that $95,000, I'm looking at the, at the cemetery, $95,044.07 is restricted income and can't be spent. And over the period of time, it's earned another $26,037.39 net of fees that is available as of the date of this report.
Correct.
Now, perpetual, well-
And that's to be spent, that's to be authorized with the town. That would just be a budgetary, that the committee couldn't just spend that.
Right.
Well, perpetual care could, would usually fall to the cemetery commission, wouldn't it? If they're empowered to do it, yeah.
Yeah.
And so where, which column here would show, just to follow where we're talking, which column here would show new money?
Great, great question.
Because I would assume that when we sell a cemetery plot for 600 or however much it is, those receipts should be going in here on an annual basis.
Correct. So what, so what you would, what you would see, I was just, for simplicity of looking, is the beginning columns. Okay, so if you allow me to move across, so you have beginning market value, and we have to keep market value based off of GASB. Governmental Accounting Standards Board says that cities and towns must make a market value adjustment at least annually. Then you have principal, we talked about, beginning earnings, net income, realized gain, losses, net earnings. So if you take those first two, add them together, that gets you net earnings. To John's question, the next two columns are your transfer in, transfer out columns. So to John's question, transfers of principal in '22 into cemetery perpetual care was $1,650. Okay? So if somebody spent out of that, you would see a negative in the earnings. If, I'll draw your attention, if you go down to the miscellaneous trust funds, and then you see there where the Julie Barnock Fire Endowment.
Yeah, Fire Endowment.
It looks like that account was closed. So then now you see that there's the $131,000 in principal taken out, $13,000 was taken out of earnings. So those two columns there are your transfers that you do in and out. Then you go ending principal, ending earnings, ending cash value. And then the last three columns are dealing with your market value. Okay? How was that?
Okay, that's clear, for sure. Yeah. Anybody have any other thoughts for Chuck, while he's here? All right, well, let's move on to the next, next person.
Yeah, I don't know if you're the right person. I was trying to figure out, over time, since the beginning, and the earliest date I could find in this report was 2011. Is that when we started with you?
I wasn't here then, but I do believe that it was started, it should be 2011.
2011 was when we opened the account, when I think Donna opened the account.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was trying to figure out what we have earned in these 12 years that we've been with you. I know there's been money taken out and withdrawn and so forth, so I'm just trying to figure out the net gain we've had over that time period.
Kathleen should be able to give you a performance number, and in that performance number, it will help say how much money was deposited, how much money was withdrawn, and ultimately, what the final return was. Keep in mind that this account, unlike the OPEB, we don't try to grow this account. We want to, because it's safety, 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 because particularly if there's stabilization here, and it's a 2/3 vote of town meeting, and you could take it all out. So towns do not put a lot of equity into these. It's usually 10 or 12%. So you're not going to see it grow.
Because the figure I saw is the ending for 12, 31, 22, was lower than what I saw the opening, unless I'm misreading something. So I'm interested in hearing that.
All right. I'll leave this here for you, just in case.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm Kathleen Glowacki. I'm the director of the investment management firm at Bartholomew &amp; Company. We have about five people on our team that this is what we do all day, every day, is really just making sure your accounts are properly invested. So I want to hit a couple of points. I'll try not to get too technical and respect the time. But I'll first talk about the trust funds. So really, how we function is, our team works very closely with the treasurer, based on what types of funds these are, of course, what the funding schedules look like, if they're scholarship funds, which is exactly what we have in here, stabilization, things like that. And the account is separately managed. So we'll work with the treasurer to determine, in this case, how much equity exposure. So as Chuck just kind of mentioned, in the trust funds at this point, we have 10% in equities, 90% in bonds. So very, and it's been like that since inception. Inception was October of 2011. So just for kind of an overview, contributions over that whole timeframe, so 10, 11 of 2011, ending, this is as of February, the end of February last month. So total contributions have been 1.9 million. And there have been withdrawals, which, this is total withdrawal, so this would also include fees. I don't have this broken out, we can always get back to you with that, has been just over And then with realized, unrealized, gains and losses, interest, dividends, accrued interest, the ending balance as of February 28th of 2023 was just over 1.8 million. So total gain after fees is just over $196,000. So as Chuck said, this is very conservative. The annualized return is about 1.15% annualized, which is pretty standard for these types of funds. Again, very, very conservative in nature. And again, I don't want to be too technical, but just to explain, there were some questions on the market. And so how we manage these funds is with individual bonds, so we're not using mutual funds. We are, on our team, we're looking at the interest rate environment. There's a question on this as well. Interest rates after the pandemic were slashed to zero. So in these types of accounts, we would keep our maturities really, really short, because we didn't want to buy a bond at a really low interest rate, or no interest rate, really, if you take into account inflation. We didn't want to lock that in for very long, so we kept our bonds really quite short. And then, now that the Fed has raised rates very aggressively over the past year in an effort to reduce inflation, we've started to extend our maturities. So we want to lock in some of these higher interest rates, right? So with all of that said, I know it's a little technical, but on our team, I just want to make clear, we are discretionary advisors. So really, we work very, very closely with the treasurer to kind of set the guidelines, really, that equity exposure and any other caveats, and then we manage within the portfolio. And so at this point, as of the end of February, the yield to maturity in the funds is 4.95%. And so yield to maturity, I think, is important. Again, I don't want to be too technical, but we think a lot about current yield. It's kind of what your coupon is, for example. Yield to maturity is us buying sometimes bonds at a discount, so you get a realized gain when they mature. So we'll buy a bond at 97, it matures at 100, you have that gain there, plus the coupon, whatever the stated coupon is. So 4.95 is really quite high. We're pretty excited about that on our team. So that's some color on trust funds, and I'll, I can pause there, I can move on to OPEB, but that's a high level of how that's invested right now.
Yeah, I think, let's move on to OPEB.
No, 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 not so fast. So on the trust funds, right, and, you know, Chuck clarified that trust funds are legal list, OPEB prudent person, on legal list. Are treasury notes acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. So if we currently have a municipal, a bank in town who has government money from a lot of towns and cities, that is giving 3% to 3.5% in a money market account, why should we not put the money in that money market account and exit this position?
Sure, yeah. So as this is, right now, you're making yield to maturity 4.95%.
Today.
Correct, yes, yep. And so money markets can also change, you know, they're really, like the MMDT, if you're familiar, is based on 90-day T-bills, that changes very quickly. And so here, the benefit is, you have an investment team that's able to manage the interest rate environment. And so we can take advantage and ultimately get you a higher interest rate.
And are you currently waiting for our positions to mature? Or have you, have you looked at, and either ruled it out or ruled it in, exiting our current positions, realizing the $66,000 hit that we would take, which we've already marked to our books, and redeploying that at a higher yields? Still maintaining the safety and liquidity and the spirit of that particular law?
Yeah, so we try not to take losses, and, you know, just as a general rule of thumb, if there was an extreme case where we decided, okay, we really don't want to be here, we want to move on, we would do that. And another portion of that is your equities. So we don't also want to try to make any tactical decisions, like Pepsi's going to do better than Coke, or something like that. So we, we try not to do that. As I said, we really keep, we kept things really, really short. And so anything that's, has an unfavorable yield at this point is maturing shortly. And so we really, you know, we try not to kind of just take losses just to hope that we can invest in something better. We try to ladder bonds. So again, we're not taking a bet that the 10-year treasury, putting all of your 90% of your portfolio in a 10-year treasury. We want to ladder things, we want exposure in treasuries, agencies, corporates, which all have different, really, different types of maturities. So it's a little bit more of a full-blown process. We don't really, we try not to just kind of blow anything out just because of the market value. Because especially if something matures at par, we wouldn't want, if we bought it at $98, it's trading at 97, because interest rates have risen, well, it matures at 100 in, let's say, six months. I don't, we don't think it's worth it to sell that, we'll get that 100.
I think one of the things, one of the things that we struggle with here is, is we need these funds to grow, not to sit there. And I, and I completely understand what Chuck is saying as a, as a past community treasurer, but the, and this might bounce back to Chuck on the question, but isn't it, isn't there a path of action that could be taken by the citizens to actually vote a different investment policy standard for the trust funds?
Two questions there. Certainly, if the asset allocation needs to change, that can always happen. If the treasurer says that, "I'm never going to touch my stabilization account," certainly, you can increase the asset allocation. So as Kathleen said, you have 10% in legal list equity. If this was not stabilization, but it, or CPA, CPA can go pretty quick, too. So we, as conservative, me being a former treasurer, I'm not going to want to go much more than 20% in taking equity risk, because what happens if there's a project? I'm listening at an earlier meeting, earlier comment, you know, you're going to need CPA to help some infrastructure here. So I'd be reluctant to do that. To answer your second question, yes. Right now, the state legislature is debating whether you can go prudent investor with a local option. If that fails, you here in this community could take it to town meeting, vote to go prudent investor on your trust funds, not CPA.
Right.
Not CPA, it's only your other funds. And that, so it's not CPA, and it's not stabilization, because the legislature don't want you, does not want you to take risk in that kind of money. So you could vote on your trust funds to go prudent investor. Then your state senator, state representative, then would take it into Boston for a home rule petition. Many, many towns do that. What this is trying to do is alleviate and almost flip it. So you have permission to do it, and then you just come back to your town meeting and change.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting we increase our equity position for anywhere above 10, maybe 15, but not to 20. But I am suggesting that there are other non-equity options out there that are paying more than the inception rate of 1.26.
Got to remember what that was when this thing was opened up, when interest rates-
Well, correct, but times have changed in the past 90 to 120 days.
You're at 4.95 right now.
Yeah.
Your yield to maturity, you're at 4.95.
All right.
Okay. Renee, question?
I'm all set. That was just clarified what I had.
So currently, you're investing, so if you went and looked at, you know, your account, you are making 4.95. The yield, the number of time weight of return is, how much did it grow? Okay, we're not here to grow it, but you're making current income of yield to maturity of nearly 5%. Okay? Thank you, thank you.
Good, thanks. Let's move on to OPEB, so we can keep within a timeframe that we've kind of promised you all, please, yeah.
Yes, I know, I'll be, I'll be brief.
Don't rush, I just, I just want to manage our-
Sure, yes, of course. So OPEB is a totally different beast from the legal list, right? So this is long-term money, you have to hit in your unfunded liability, which for most communities, they're really far from that, right? And so in this case, again, we work very closely with the treasurer, and we try to typically, our recommendation is 70% equities, 30% bonds. And that's been the recommendation, and the treasurer just recently, you know, enacted that in 2019, I believe. So that's- So that's really how we're invested in imprudent, which OPEB is prudent, as Chuck said, we can invest in everything. So we're invested in domestic equity, international equity, domestic and international bonds, and then a sleeve of alternatives. So alternatives exposure really just uncorrelated assets with traditional markets. And so those really are, do exactly that. They move differently than the traditional markets. So they help to smooth out the ride. They kind of take off the highest highs and then the lowest lows because ultimately, these are long-term funds, but they're also public funds. And so we don't want to partake in really terrible market environments. If that means we don't really reach for the high highs, we won't hit those low lows. So that's really the high-level perspective of that. And then again, on our team, discretionary, we spend a lot of time interviewing mutual fund managers. So these are all mutual funds in here across all categories. And then on our team, we just manage the asset allocation. So for example, more recently, we were talking as a group, of course, there's been a lot of talk about recession. So one of the things we did on behalf of the portfolio is we went in here and we said, we really want to have better credit quality. We don't want to own junk bonds or bad mortgages or anything like that. So we really went in and we just bought more treasuries because they're paying so much, and we really just wanted to get in a safer position on the margin. Because again, with OPEB, it is so long-term, it has to kind of go through the bad times to get to really grow because OPEB is what you really want to grow. So just again, from a high level, this was opened in February of 2015, so a much shorter timeframe. And the contributions over that time have been $350,000. And the total gain after fees has been just under $58,000, which is an annualized return of just around 4%. Now, I will just say that the risk profile was more conservative prior to 2019. So we just kind of, in 2019, got this to a more aggressive risk profile. But that's sort of your high-level number there. So I'll pause there.
On that number, on page five of 12 of your report, if that's what you have in front of you, where it shows the historical positions of it, and our portfolio return annualized at 3.95, you have six other benchmarks there. Which one of those six benchmarks are we most closely resembling?
On page six?
It says five of 12 in mine, performance history.
Oh, performance history, okay. Yes, so your portfolio is, of course, the portfolio return. And then, oh, this one.
I'm assuming those others are benchmarks.
They are.
Which one closely resembles us?
Oh, I'm looking at trust funds, I'm sorry. I'm like, that does not look great. Okay, sorry, give me one second here. My apologies, all right. So the most applicable benchmark where you have your portfolio return, it's actually the, not the first benchmark, but it's the next one that says 55, 25, 20 equity bonds and liquid alternatives. The prior one is more like your hedge fund alternatives, where you can't sell out of it for 10 years or whatever the case may be. When we use alternatives, they're daily liquid. So that would be your, kind of your most applicable benchmark now. But again, back prior to 2019, it was more conservative, your portfolio. So just keep that in mind, some of the since-inception numbers, you know, this, for example, if you're looking at 630, since inception, about 4%. That higher risk profile is at 4.26. So really, you're, you're pretty right on that, even though it was more conservative in the beginning.
And you said that changed in 2019? That's what these figures kind of?
Correct, yeah.
Look, yeah, look like?
Yes, yep. Unfortunately, we can't show more than one benchmark. It's just, it is what it is for compliance reasons, we show that.
And then obviously, '22 was not a great year?
Yes, yeah.
Talked about that a little bit?
Say the least, 17.
Sure, yeah. And so I'll actually just, if you're still looking at 630, it's not the whole year, but I'll just sort of touch on page five, actually. This is, and I'll say this for viewers, I'll say it out loud as well. But if you look at 2022, your portfolio, you know, was down about 17 and a half percent. And so if you look to those last three benchmarks, these are kind of the components of the other benchmarks. I know it's kind of technical, but what this is saying is that MSCI, ACWE, IMI, it's a lot of jargon for just saying, if you owned domestic and international stocks, you, at 630, would have been down over 20%. And then if you just owned bonds, this is the part that I think is even worse to some degree, you would have been down about 11%, which is pretty unheard of for the bond market. Rates rose so drastically, prices declined like a rock. And so normally, in a bear market, which 20% down, you know, is, your bonds kind of help you, and they didn't in this environment. And then that last benchmark is alternatives, down 6.6-ish percent. So still down, but definitely better than traditional markets, which is kind of what we try to have in there. So just to shed some context around that.
Keep on, yeah, go ahead.
No, that's.
That was just a question ahead, so.
No, yeah, that's honestly, I think, unless someone's telling me I'm missing something, I think that's pretty much the questions.
I think that was the year-end report. We had a, I think we also got the December statement, end of December statement, maybe? Or end of November, I'm sorry, September, one or the other?
I have.
We got to 930, yeah, it was in there.
I can tell you, as of February, so so far this year, I know it's end of February, the portfolio's up 3.13%. Really driven by equity markets, really driven by actually international equity markets, which is kind of interesting. So, you know, your portfolio was up, as I said, for two months, 3.13. The most applicable benchmark is up 2.79. And all returns, of course, if I didn't say this, are net of fees as well.
Okay, all right. All right. I just have a general question. Any, any other things that you're going to present? I had another question or two, I think, in there of what I forwarded was, is there something else we should be doing? Are there other, you know, we, we have been talking, we may end up with things like the opioid, oh, sorry, opioid settlement money coming in. Should we think about creating a stabilization fund for that? I mean, what, what kind of things should be, as a board, maybe be thinking about doing to give further direction to the treasurer and to you all?
Thank you. Opioids, they, I.
Yeah, I know.
It's late, it's been a long day. We'll leave it at stabilization. Yes, other towns are now going through establishing the opioid stabilization account. Certainly, there's guidance through Division of Local Services on how to set it up. That would then go into this account. You'd still, I believe, still have the same spending requirements, the two-thirds vote. So yes, you could put that in here. And then you got to figure out how you're going to spend it. As far as enterprise funds, it depends on your auditor, okay? If you have the depreciation funds of an enterprise fund, it can go into this. If it's part of your regular operating, it can't by mass general laws. So if it's your operating budget, going through your receipts from water, your receipts from sewer, that has to stay however you're currently doing it. But if you have a depreciation fund in water or sewer, then that could go into this. And what we would normally do is put that into that section of other town funds. We'd list out the CPA stabilization, ambulance stabilization, and then we'd go there.
Chuck, just on the enterprise, what about, where would you classify retained in the earnings at the end of the year, the enterprises form of free cash? Specifically, the water department here in town.
I'm going to answer that in two ways. If I'm answering it for myself, and as a treasurer, I would hope that I could put that in this account, but I would defer to the accountant or, you know, your auditor to find out where it needs to go. You could argue it's your retained earnings, it's not there for immediate, immediate appropriation. So if that means, I can put it here.
Last month, we had Melanza and Heath, those are, Tanya, and she was asked a specific question. Would you consider retained earnings of water department to be general fund money or trust funds for the water department? And she said, once they're, once they're certified retained earnings, they're not general fund money anymore. We could put them in there. So for example, that's where I say we need the money. They're, they're sitting on $300,000 in cash. I mean, even if you're getting 1%, which hopefully we could do a little bit more because we're at 4.95.
Yeah, 4.95.
You know, it's something more for this $1.2 million project they've been kicking down the curve.
Yeah, yeah. Well, some of that will go toward that. I mean, I think that's part of their match for this grant that they've got as well, so.
And I would concur with the auditor and John, that that is not immediate, you know, budget money. That's how I started the comment. So that outside excess money, free cash, if you will, should be able to, and if the auditor, if, if anybody's going to write something up and says, ah, you shouldn't be doing that, it's going to be your auditor. So I would concur with the auditor. Then, so I talked about enterprise and talked about opioid. So retained earnings, I, I concur.
I, I just have one more. Anybody else have anything?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
But mine's a little bit more general, so go ahead.
Okay, no, I was just, back on the trust funds for a minute, you, you kept mentioning, the community preservation account is there, but you said we can't spend some of that? Is that what I heard?
No, you can spend all of it. My comment would have been on the CPA is as far as the asset allocation. Whereas you can spend it on whatever project the committee decides, I would be more conservative in taking on more equity risk.
Got it, understood, okay.
And I believe based off of your June 30 market value is $1,202. And then how this all works is treasurer is usually set up, settle up once a year, going back to what your comment was earlier, and when I was first to the microphone, you know, the money comes in, money goes out, and they settle up. So there's money probably sitting in a regular money market account someplace, and at the end of the years, treasurer's usually push money back and forth and get all the money in the right buckets on June 30.
So on the CPA money, though?
Yep.
If, if we follow the, the logic from before, the second column is the bulk of the money that can't be touched?
CPA, I believe you can spend all of it.
So, so that, that second column applies to everything except for CPA?
The second column, so this is, this is some of the differences in each of the communities to address what you're exactly saying.
51 towns, we're all going to be on the same page.
But they should, but they were not. So what, what John is referring to is for you at home, you have $1.2 million in CPA, but on the accounting report, it says $1,078,000 in principal. You can spend all of that. So what towns tend to do is money that they receive goes into the principal column, and then what they earn is in the earnings column. To be 100% correct, you can spend it all. So what you really should have is all 1.202 in your spendable column for earnings. That's what it should be. But it's just more of how people look at it. It's on the books as far as the accounting. It's semantics here, they know that they can spend the whole thing. But John's point is valid.
Good, Reni, you have a question?
Yeah, so you manage the funds for 270 communities out of.
70.
270 out of 351, so.
There are, to clarify, there are some water and school districts that we manage for. So as far as the 351 cities and towns, I think we're probably about 230-ish?
Yeah, so the majority of them anyway.
Majority.
And so with the percentages between bonds and equity, you know, like 90 and 10, and then 70 and 30, are these decisions made based on what exactly, in terms of the percentages?
I'll go to OPEB first. What ends up happening there, when OPEB started way back in 2016, all of us were new to risk. Okay, oh, can't take risk, I've been told, I have safety, safety, safety. So a lot of these accounts started at 50/50, very, very, very conservative. And then now through time, all of us treasurers have realized that this is 30-year money, and we need to take risk. So we encourage all of our towns to be at 70/30, 60/40, and 70/30, 60/40 with private equity, real estate, taking on more risk. To your point about the trust funds, and I alluded to earlier, if this trust, if this account had zero stabilization, zero CPA, and it was all your trust funds, your cemetery, perpetual care, we see some towns 70/30, legalist. But when you have CPA and stabilization, you're at that 10, 15, 20. Okay, so it all depends on what the money is. So if it's a blended account like this, you're right where 99% of them are. Again, if we culled out your stabilization and CPA, we're seeing towns that are 40, 50, 60% equity.
So it has more to do with the type of funds than the amount of money in the funds?
Hundred percent. It's what is the funds and what should be the risk associated with the various funds.
Very good, good. Any last questions? Well, listen, we thank you very much for coming. I think this was instructive, and I know this is probably not something that you do often, or at least we haven't done it in my five years of being around the select board. So I think it was useful to have you come in, and as I had mentioned, we were in the process of reviewing a variety of our select board policies, and this investment policy's been on the books more recently than some of the ones that we've been reviewing, I must say. But it just seemed like this would be a good time to also have you come in and tell us a couple of things, and if there's something that we should be doing, we can be talking about that in our future meeting. So thanks very much for coming in.
Thank you for having us. Have a great night. Thank you, nice meeting all of you.
Okay, moving on. How about any reports? Ed, do you have anything at the town administrator level?
Not much, since I just gave one last week, unless you told me that you're not going to report on the little tour we took.
Oh, no, why don't you, yeah, go ahead. Why don't you go ahead with that, yeah?
Okay. So the one piece of new information is that yesterday at 2:30, about, oh God, must have been.
14 of them.
I thought it was more than that. I thought there was like 20 of us out there, so.
Well, counting us.
Yes, counting us. But we, Mass DOT through the filing for the grant for the school safety zone improvements on Pomeroy Meadow Road for Norris School. We had a little tour of Pomeroy Meadow Road and a little bit of Gun Road Extension, and we actually split up into two and three groups, and some of the individuals actually got a tour behind the schools, the parents picked up the children, and Eliza was explaining, the principal was explaining what was going on back there. So there, there were, geez, Mass DOT was there, a group from the Safe Roots to Schools, there was a group from, is it Aon?
AECOM.
AECOM, who is the engineering firm that has been assigned to us from, you know, through the grant. There were some people from the state through the bicycle program that were there, basically viewing what was going on. And the reason 2:30 was picked, and we were probably there an hour and 15 minutes or whatever, was pickup starts at about 3:05. There was a decent-sized line at about 2:30 when the tour started. The first part of the tour was, I will call it back, I guess it would be down Pomeroy Meadow Road towards Route 10, and as, as we did that, that line grew, and it was interesting that some of the parents that were going to park were a little intimidated by the amount of people and kind of parked further back. But I, I think it was a.
They were all in their bright green neon vests, so that scared a few people.
I, I mean, to me, it was actually an impressive start to this, you know, grant program. It was, Chris had mentioned. It was, Chris had mentioned how interesting you would hear like different little pieces of what was important or what is picked out by each, shall we say, state agency that I had previously mentioned. And sometimes they kind of went together, but other times they might have had a little bit different opinion. You know, Chief Illingsworth, Randall Kemp was also there to join us. But I thought it was a real good kickoff meeting. And it was actually a nice day to be out there weather-wise.
Was it raining?
No, the rain didn't come till later, fortunately.
Were the kids riding their bikes and walking? It was mostly pickups.
They were, they were walking.
I got a picture of a little bike, a little kiddo on a bike.
That's right. There was one on 5. And it was also interesting because, you know, even when I go out there and travel it with the car and go by it to see where the line is on any particular day or any particular time, walking it, you see different things. It was, number one, there were some parents or grandparents that parked over on, was it Parsons Way? There was a couple of cars there. And they would walk out and actually pick up their children or grandchildren. It was also interesting because as they currently pull up on the curb in the sidewalk, okay, if you want to walk that in particular places, if there happens to be a telephone pole, you know, or an abreviate or whatever, there was actually a couple of trucks or cars that I actually hit my elbow on. It was, you know, so tight trying to walk on, on the path.
So it was a good, it was a good meeting. And if you have any other thoughts, if you want to add something, feel free. Any of your discussions with them? No?
No, my thought, Ed.
Yeah.
It was actually a perfect day for them to come out and see, because there was a lot of pickup, there was a lot of.
Yeah, no, I think so. So I think the next step is within a month or in about a month, they're supposed to get back to us with some preliminary thoughts on a design in terms of looking at all the things. Because we had put forth an idea, and based on them actually getting there to see it now, figuring out, you know, where there might be a crosswalk or whatever. So they're engaged, I would say, and all very excited to come out and take a look at this. So I think we've got a good.
Yeah, it sounds very promising. If they're coming back to you with their thoughts on the design.
Yes, absolutely.
They're not going to spend their time on something that they're not going to fund. I wouldn't, I would hope not.
Yeah, no, I think so too. I mean, I think there was enough people engaged that I, I think this is going to move forward. It'll, it'll take its, its time. I mean, it's not a fast-moving project by any means, but it does sound like we've established a good dialogue to.
The issue was recognized for sure by both the DOT as well as the other group representing the safety votes.
Yeah.
That's great.
Okay, all right. How about?
Thank you.
Yeah. And how about some other, just select board reports, just briefly? If there's anything new since we last met? If there's anything? If there's nothing, we can wait until Tuesday as well, if you'd like to our next meeting. But if you've got something, yeah, go ahead, Rini.
The only update I think I have, because not, most of them haven't met or there's nothing new, is the Public Safety Building Committee met yesterday and reviewed the five proposals that were submitted and identified two firms to set up interviews with. They had the highest score of the five of them. And so it is in the process of setting up interviews. One of them's set up, and I think the other one is pending. So that's the update from the Public Safety Committee. We're meeting again next, well, the interview's supposed to be, I think, on the fourth, right?
Yes, one at 3:30 and hopefully the other one at 5:00.
Yeah, 3:30 and 5:00.
The one, the one architectural company, HXT, has already.
HKT.
HKT has reached out and taken the 3, accepted the 3:30 invitation.
Great.
Yeah, so that's it.
Glad to hear that. Was a positive move forward. And people had, firms that at least responded to the RFQ this time.
Yeah, that was, that was really good. And it was, you know, good process for the committee to go through to review them and discuss them. And then as far as the Senior Center Building Feasibility Committee, not meeting again until next Thursday, but the letters went out. Thank you very much, Chris, for sending out the letters to the landowners, asking about their properties. And I think everybody else has not met since then.
Okay, yeah. How about Joy, anything down here?
Housing Authority did meet last Wednesday. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it. And when I went to go review the video, it wasn't up yet on EMEA. So I'm going to reserve my report for next week.
Sure, that's fine.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Brantley, anything?
No, nothing.
All right. John, anything?
I'm good.
Okay. And nothing really on my part either, I don't think. So I think we'll keep on going. We do have a grant committee meeting coming up. And we're going to be meeting, I think, with the Council on Aging Director, talking about the potential for the next Highland Valley grant. That's coming up fairly soon, so we'll be chatting about that briefly. But nothing major coming at us at this point in time. Okay, moving on to appointments and resignations. All right, we have a resignation from the Concom. Joy, would you like to take that?
Sure.
Liaison?
Yes, we have a, do you want me to read it?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, sure. So we have a resignation letter from Megan Kuzinski dated March 22, 2023, to whom it may concern. Unfortunately, due to continued issues with my health, I feel that I am no longer able to perform my duties as a member of the Town of Southampton Conservation Commission. Effective immediately, I resign my position. So I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Megan Kuzinski from the Conservation Commission. And I would like to add a big thank you to her. She was very enthusiastic about being on the conservation. She did a lot for them while she was on it. And she was very educated in the field. And so it is a loss for the Conservation Commission. So I just want to thank her very much for the service to the town and all the best wishes for her and her health.
I'll second it. Yeah, okay. So motion made by Joy, seconded by Rini. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, and I will just also add a general thanks too to that, Joy. I think that's quite true. Megan, I've run into on a few occasions, and certainly with her technical background, she was the right fit for Concom. So we wish her well and hope we can get through things. Was she the rep from, does Concom have a rep to CPA?
We, they appointed a new rep, the newest member. She's been re, she's been appointed. I'm sorry, I forgot her name.
Okay.
But she has been appointed as the new CPA rep.
Okay, thanks. Yep, okay. Very good. So that's all we have there. We have some new business. And the first item is the COA Director Search Committee Charge. And I think, Rini, thank you for putting together an idea of a draft here. Everybody should have that in their packets. So you want to kind of talk us through this? Any questions that you have or?
Yeah, that, sure. So, you know, it's kind of detailed. It kind of gives the steps. I took the recommendation of the Council on Aging in terms of the composition of the committee. I think that what they're hoping is that there'd be a select board member, two COA board members, a Friends member, former COA employee, finance slash, I think they were hoping that Bradley Oskin might be willing to be sort of the peer department head finance person, and then a representative from Mass COA or COA director from another town, the town administrator being an ex-officiated member. All terms, I put 9:30 thinking six months or sooner if a director is hired in case it has to be reopened or something. It gave a little bit of leeway. I just want to mention something about the composition. I don't feel I should be on this committee. I read an article about search committees. And I'm going to ask if possibly Joy or Chris might consider being on this committee only because I think having the support of the select board for this person being hired, I think would be an important thing as opposed to my term being up. This would likely go beyond that. So I'm asking if that might be, somebody else from the committee might be going to do that? I know John is already on the search committee for the Fire Department. So anyway, so procedure, it's just basically the committee will report to the select board. Members will elect the chair and the rest. Meetings will occur monthly at least. I'm sure it might be more often at different times. Open recorded, except when it's confidential interviewing, minutes, so typical stuff. And then it just, the charge is basically from establishing the desired timeline to the qualities that they're, what we're seeking. And then it goes through more detail as far as reviewing the job description, creating the posting, scoring, interviewing, and so forth, with the goal to recommend one to two finalists to the select board slash town administrator for the COA director position. So this person reports to Ed, so I don't know whether or not the recommendation, the final recommendation would be one to two finalists to the select board or the town administrator. If this is a committee that's being created by the select board, I wasn't sure if it should say one or the other. And Janet Kane couldn't be here tonight, but she is certainly open to feedback or change to this particular charge if people feel like the composition should be different or something should change.
Okay. Just a question on number eight and number nine. So confidential, so there's a scoring, review the applications, scoring matrix, schedule an initial interview. And that would be a confidential interview for all of those by this committee, is that right?
Yep.
And then recommend finalists for open public interviews.
Yeah, so it'd be like a second interview, which would be open to the public. One of the other things I read in the article was that, because I had asked about whether or not, there's nobody on this committee that would, for example, be an employee. And it doesn't recommend having a search committee include employees or people that report up to the director. But that might be an opportunity for current employees to attend a final interview and not necessarily be a vote, but be somebody, they would be able to be present. It would be public at that point. But oftentimes, people are, might be leaving on the position. So the first interview would be confidential so that they would be able to seek information and application for the position without letting a current employer know, for example.
Guess I'm just wondering about whether that step nine is needed. I'm just thinking of other positions that we've done here where we've kind of given that charge to the committee to make those interviews and then come up with their final choices without necessarily having, taking another set of interviews. But okay, John, go ahead.
So, and I know we haven't finalized the charge on this for the Fire Chief, but this is, I mean, this is similar to the Fire Chief search, but, and I don't want to say search, I'll call it screening, because that committee we set up is more to screen, to come up with one or two, and then the final interviews to happen at the select board level. So I wonder if number nine, like they do all the work and say, okay, here are the one or two people we want to move forward, and we can have a discussion on whether there should be two or not. But then have, have the public interview at select board.
Look, that was my assumption, that that final interview would be done by the select board.
Number nine? So maybe just write it in there. Recommend finalists for open public interviews to be conducted by the select board.
Yeah, I guess where I was confused is we got nine, we got 10 and 12. So I just wanted to be sure of the, just the steps on that.
Well, because if you do that, then do you, if the select board's doing the final interview, are we then going to recommend to the town administrator who he should offer the position to at our request? Is number 12 needed if we're doing the public interview?
I actually had not thought, when I wrote it up as a draft, that we would be doing the final interview. In my mind, the position reports to the select, to the town administrator, that we would be making a recommendation to the town administrator, the hiring manager, so to speak, of the position. But, I mean, it's the charge from the select board, so people are willing to, I mean, feel free to structure this any way you want to.
And while we ponder that, number 11, I would specify that we'd want to see a clean quarry.
Quarry, yeah. Quarry check, yeah.
I think it's a requirement of all senior senator employees anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just, it seems like if the committee's going to do, I'm trying to visualize, so if the committee does all the initial interviews, say there's five candidates, they do all those interviews confidentially, then they would still have to be narrowing it down to two or three to come before the select board for an open interview. And it just seems like there's, I can't figure out if it's a duplication or if it's a.
It looks like a redundancy.
An extra step somewhere there.
They could be combined. Right, because, because I had not figured that the final interview would be done by the select board.
Yeah, and I don't.
I thought it would be done by the hiring manager.
Right, I would, I would tend to think that we would delegate that to the town administrator as the hiring super, hiring manager or supervisor of the position myself as a direct report.
Well, you can do that. And then I, then I would bring forward my recommendation to the select board.
For a final, for a final vote or something.
Which is in here.
And I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the thought process. I'm just saying, how is this, and maybe we need to just keep this in mind when we do the, how is this different than Fire Chief? Because Fire Chief, day-to-day, reports to the town administrator.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we haven't seen a charge yet, so.
Well, I know, that's one.
Yeah. No, we can, we can be inspired by this one, perhaps. But yeah, that's what I've just, no, it's just those last two or three steps. I just wasn't sure that, I'm fine up to the confidential interview part. I'm just trying to figure out where we go from there. Recommend.
Ed, I don't have, I'm still looking for my editable draft of this. I have the PDF that was sent out to the packet, so I'm not making any comments on it until I find it. So if you want to, go ahead.
Yeah. Judy would have to send you the, the other one back or something. Anybody, Joy, any thoughts on this while you're done there? How about the job?
Nothing that hasn't been expressed already.
Yeah. I guess the committee has to decide who's going to, who's going to make, who's going to make the decision to hire.
I mean, I guess I would, okay, here's, here's an option. So my thought would be confidential interview by the team. They come up with the top two candidates to be interviewed.
Oh, one or two.
I think two.
What if there's a clear, I mean, if you're making a recommendation to a hiring person, why wouldn't you just put forth the best possible candidate? If there was only, if there was only one clear, that's why I put one to two. Do you really think it's important to have?
But then.
Two, just to have two?
But wouldn't, wouldn't you have two that then the town administrator could be delegated to do that set of interviews and then come back to us saying, okay, of these two, this is the person that seems to be the best candidate? Isn't that kind of how we've done? I'm just thinking of our other positions in town from the, the town accountant or other ones that we've hired. I know town accountant took care of the assistant town accountant position. We weren't involved in any of that. Those were interviews at that level. So again, that was a town department head managing that and making recommendations back to the town administrator, right?
Plus, the town administrator will be in, on the confidential interviews. Because that person's part of the seven, well, it's part of the makeup.
Yeah.
I know they're ex officio.
Yeah, he won't be a voting member of it.
Right, but he'll be able to participate. So he'll already sat through all the interviews once.
He'll have sat through all the interviews, yeah. Okay, well, somebody, somebody make a, make a thought here. That was just one, one of my thoughts, yeah. Brantley, anybody?
Yeah, as far as number 10, encourage participation of current COA center employees and so forth. What do you mean by encourage? And does that mean they're going to sit and ask questions?
Yeah, I would, I would eliminate number 10. I don't, I mean, if.
I mean.
Well, once, if the committee gets into interviewing the finalists, the final candidates, they're no longer a search committee.
Yeah.
Which takes away the confidential interviews and everything else that leads up to that.
So you want to call it an ad hoc screening committee?
Search is fine.
Okay.
Screening and search is, that was.
All right, I found the, I found the draft. I'm happy to make some edits to this if, if anybody wants. So is everybody comfortable with the composition, the procedure for the most part, and the charges up until confidential interview of all qualified applicants? And then you want to change something after eight? Or nine?
Maybe.
Maybe?
Yes, I'm comfortable with everything before number eight.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
It's just those last couple that are just.
Okay. All right, so think about this. So you have four people apply for the position. You interview, the committee sets up matrix and reviews all the stuff, and then they set up interviews. They interview the four people. They have two people that they think that are qualified for the position. One of them is a little stronger than the other, but they both want to come back for second interviews. Who should do the second interview?
The final interview?
Yeah.
So it would be the second and final interview.
Yeah. It would be public, so that the seniors could come, so employees could come, so it would be public. Would it be the select board and the town administrator? What do you think, Ed?
Well, and I'm just thinking this through, generally, if you gave that to me, it's not going to be a public, open interview.
Right. Yeah, so if you wanted other seniors to be there, then it would have to be those top two candidates, for example, would come before the select board for a public interview.
So why don't we say confidential interview, blah, 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 recommend finalists for open public interviews with the select board.
Right, so I would say recommend two. Because I think, you never know, if you only have one, and that person decides not to accept the job, then you're really, you shot yourself in the foot, right? So I think we need two to come into the final.
Okay, I'll say a minimum of two.
Final gateway, you know, of consideration, right?
The other thing, it might be implied in there, but I think when it gets to the public piece, if they can, if that committee can somehow be charged with soliciting feedback on questions and concerns, that we could then utilize to formulate our questions in the final interview, that's where you would get the public input.
To get some ideas of potential questions.
What are the immediate concerns of the current staff, of the, you know, current, well, any citizen, really.
Right.
Out there in town, and then if we had that two weeks ahead of time, we could formulate some of our questions around that, and build it into the process.
Okay, so what I put was recommend a minimum of two finalists for open public interviews with the select board is number nine. Number 10 is interview finalist.
I think you can read it at number 10.
It would say maybe solicit input, I would put this ahead of the final, before number nine, I would say solicit input from current employees and program participants to gather, you know, information so that the select board can formulate its questions, and then I would put, then I would put, recommend finalists for the open public interview.
So.
In between eight and nine.
Yep.
Solicit input from current COA employees and.
Purchase, program participants.
And program participants.
Yeah, to get, they're priorities, and.
To, to assist in formulating questions for the interview. Yeah, go ahead, Francine.
This, it's just, it's just my.
I can't hear you louder.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's just my, my feeling, under procedure, meetings will occur at least monthly, I think we need to be more ambitious than that. I know it can be more, and that's what it means, but I think we need to put it out there, that it has to happen, because between now and the end of June is all the time that we have.
Yeah, I think I put at least monthly, because in a recent other charge, I think we debated all that, and we said, you know, so what happens, is this a snowstorm or there's something else that comes up that at least says at least monthly, but again, happy to change it.
I know, it's, I know, it just implies at least, and it can happen more often, but I think people need to know upfront that we need to.
Well, we could say, you know, you could change it to bi-weekly or something like that, if you wanted to. I think, I think in a way, I mean, I hear the short timeframe, and it also maybe would help with expectations of people that you're trying to get on the committee to understand what the time commitment is going to be, so.
What about, what about provide monthly updates to the select board through the town admin, so we'll know whether they're meeting or not, because it's a confidential process.
Right.
So we'll just, yep, the committee's meeting, we're going through, we're soliciting applications, so we'll just make that part of the TA's report.
Right, that would come through the TA's report, right, yeah. So, so soliciting input from the current COA employees and program participants for, whatever, for formulating questions for the public interviews. So then recommend the minimum two finalists for the public interviews. And I guess probably the number 11, maybe just.
Terms of background check.
That seems like that would come in right around that same time, that you're going to be checking all the, all the background degrees and certification, or do you wait until the very end? I mean, I think, wouldn't you want to do that for the top two, or would you?
You might, if you, well, I would suggest on the number 11, say verify finalist applicant, applicants.
Finalists, yeah. And is that finalist plural, or just?
Finalists.
Just plural, yeah. Plural, finalists.
Yeah.
Lists.
Okay.
That potentially would be the last question we ask each one of them, we turn to the town administrator and say, is there anything to be noted on the reference checks? Yes or no, and if there is, then let's hear it out.
So who, so is that not the charge, job of this committee, is that what you're saying?
No, I think the committee would look at the degrees, licenses, and certifications, the reference checks might be the town administrator.
Has to be the town administrator, yeah.
And probably the Cory at that point, you want to wait until you have a potential offer.
Right, so I'm thinking just part of 11, Rini could move in right around that, recommend the finalists for open public interviews, because they will have looked at their backgrounds as well as having done the confidential interview. So I just think 11 is out of place somewhere, it needs to go earlier in the process, that's all. So maybe it's between seven and, I don't know, seven and eight, maybe, I don't know.
I'm lost on where you are.
The number 11, about applicants' college degrees and licenses and certifications?
Okay, it's.
I think that just.
Verified finalist, finalist applicants, college degrees, Cory, licenses, certifications, and references.
And I'm, I'm dividing out references and Cory, I think for the.
Yeah, references and Cory, I think Cory should be the town administrator.
Final thing that the town administrator would do.
Yep.
Okay, so.
Whereas, the committee would look at educational background, licenses, certifications, as part of their interview, as part of their confidential interview process, maybe? Does that sort of making sense? It just feels like it comes earlier in the process to me.
So add it to eight? Or before eight?
Yeah, or, or some of those things may be part of your scoring matrix, for example.
Do you want it to be explicit, what is being verified?
Yeah, I mean, I would think you'd want to.
No, I think the scoring matrix should precede review of applications. I think it's important to decide, what is it that we're going to value highest, and which ones are ones we just want to check the box, and then apply the applications to that matrix. So I think it's different.
Okay, so I think what I'm saying is that in that matrix, one of the columns is level of degrees, certifications, or whatever, licenses, is that, that, so wherever.
Experience.
I'm thinking that's a, a column within, or a couple columns within that matrix, so that's all I'm trying to say there. So. I mean, you can review the applications, compare them to the scoring matrix, I think what you've got there is true. So I think just that the, in 11, the thing that would stay would be the reference check.
And that would be done by Ed, so we could just take it out, is that what you're saying?
Right, yeah, I mean, I think reference check and Cory would be part of the normal hiring process.
Okay.
The finalists, yeah, or the hiring process, yeah.
Okay, well, then maybe the review of the background experience and all that is, will be part of the scoring matrix.
I kind of think so.
Okay.
It feels like it could be, anyway, yeah.
Okay. So, I'll get rid of then. The checking of references, Cory, licenses, certifications, and all that. All right, so we have one, two, three, four, create the posting, five, develop the scoring matrix, five, determine the interview questions, seven, six, determine the questions, seven, review applications, compare to the matrix, schedule the interviews, confidential interview, solicit input from current COA employees and program participants for second interview questions. Number 10 is recommend a minimum of two finalists for open public interviews with the select board. Number 11 is recommend one to two finalists to the town administrator for.
I think probably recommend.
One?
At that point, wouldn't it be the finalist? After we've done public interviews for two people, wouldn't we recommend one? Or we'd rank them?
Okay, so it's really only 11 is the last one, then. Recommend finalist to the town administrator for the COA director position.
Ed, John, or?
I don't, I guess, it just seems off that way, but the only thing I really have it to compare it to is a superintendent search. So, I mean, so the body, so in that case, the body, when they cast, because it's in public session, they just.
Well, the difference is that.
You go by roll call, and whoever gets three votes gets the job.
Yeah, but the difference is that the superintendent reports to the school committee.
Yeah, you're right.
This is the person that reports to the town administrator, I think they should have hiring authority.
Then I think the select board should do the final interview in conjunction with the town administrator.
Yeah, so we want me to be explicit about that?
Yeah, let the town administrator chair that portion.
I just assumed if it's for the select board, he'll be there. Recommend, okay, so solicit input.
Or at the, at the end of it, ask if the town administrator has a recommendation, yeah.
Recommend a minimum of two finalists for open public interviews with the select board and town administrator. And then recommend a finalist to the town administrator for the COA director position.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. And so I think that, back on your scoring matrix, so that issue about degrees and licenses and certifications, that's part of actually what you have in here is number five, which is develop the scoring matrix.
Yeah.
So that would be inclusive, within that, I would think those would be.
Yes, you're right.
Things to look at.
Yeah.
As they develop the scoring matrix, that would be my thought.
Yeah, and it's based on the job description, because it says determine, scoring matrix to determine each applicant's match to the job description.
Right, okay, does that sort of make sense?
Yeah, does the job description say Cory and all that? Probably, hopefully.
Well, we know that, I mean, any of us that volunteer have to have it, so one would assume that the COA director has to have it too, but yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that should be something that they could be asked in the application process to submit.
Some of this is done as you screen the applications, I mean, it's automatic.
Depends on what they wanted to have them submit as part of the application process.
Ed, what do you think of the composition and procedure, does that all sound all right to you, in terms of who's on the committee?
Seems to make perfect sense.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the charge as amended.
Okay.
I was just going to ask, is the.
I'm going to go ahead.
We have a, we have a motion and a second by Francine.
A second, discussion. Does the term seem okay to you? In the event there might need to be an interim for a period of time, it just gives a six-month period of time, which is three months after the end of the fiscal year or retirement, yeah.
Can always be changed if we needed to, so end of, end of September?
Yeah.
Okay, and I guess the only question is, who would like to be on this from the select board?
Can I just ask on the goal thing, where it says goal to recommend one to two finalists, are we, are we changing that now to say recommend a finalist for the COA director position to the, to the town administrator? It's the goal at the top, or should I just get rid of that? It might contradict the end that says recommend a finalist to the town administrator for the COA director position. Should I just say the same thing there is the goal?
The goal of the screening committee is to identify up to two finalists to come forward for the public interviews.
Oh, okay.
Once we have the public interview, that screening committee stops.
Okay, good, thank you. So the goal is to recommend one to two finalists for the COA director position. Okay, we'll leave it at that. Okay, so back to who wants to be on it.
Can we clarify that, so that we can then take a vote on the, on the motion that's there to accept this, because that was one comment about who from select board would want to do this. Joy, do you want to? If not, I will, but I.
No, I mean, I.
I know you've got a busy schedule, so I'm.
I will.
Yeah? Okay.
You will be on it?
And if you can't, you know, we can, we can tag team if we had to, I suppose, you know, if there was something that came up at work that you couldn't be there, you know, we can, we can figure that out.
And I amend my motion to add Joy Piper as the select board representative to have on that committee.
Okay, and. Second again, Francine, second again.
Do you want a second?
All right, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so be it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joy.
Thanks, Joy, yeah, and we'll, we'll work it out, okay. All right, next, Ed.
Do you want me to send this, I already edited, do you want me to send it out?
Yeah, go ahead, please. Mr.?
Madam Chair.
Trying to help you out, Ed, that's all.
Madam Chair, if I could, 7:45, I could excuse myself from the meeting.
Okay, yep, thanks, John.
Yep, and Madam Chair, would the board consider taking the PRF for the two part-time police officers out of order?
Certainly, we could do that, thank you for reminding me. The police chief is always so quiet, sitting in here, I forget that he's really here for a reason, he's just not here to listen to us, but he has some business he wants us to do, too, right? All right, let me pull these up here, we have two, I think, for the police department, so we'll take these two, and then we'll come back to the others, is that okay? I think, let's try police department, so we have Lauren Salomeo.
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 That's a resignation, that's a resignation.
That's a resignation?
Yes, that's a PC, yeah.
All right, so we need to.
She's from dispatch.
Do we need, from dispatch, do we need to vote on that, yes? Accept the resignation?
Yes.
So, somebody.
I moved, I moved to accept Lauren Salomeo's resignation.
And I'll second it.
All right, Francine and Rini, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion approved, okay. Now, Chief, yes, next, we have two part-time police officers, a PRF is all I'm seeing.
Sure, those are replacement positions, based on Officer Yazo, who had left, and the anticipated departure of Officer Lawrence Shell on July 31st. So the goal is to try to get these officers feel trained. I have had, you know, expressed interest from people about the position, so I believe that they can be filled, I just want to try to get them trained in, prior to the summer for vacation months to support our department and lessen the burden on the full-time, as well as the overtime budget.
So these are less than 20 hours a week, right?
Yes.
So you would, I think we, I remembered that either the training was paid for, but not the time, is that the way it is?
So there is, the training can be while they're working, so there, if, if the officers are required to go through the Bridge Academy, some of, whoever might apply might have already gone to the Bridge Academy, I don't know yet, because it'll, we'll have to post it. But if they, if we hire somebody that has not gone to the Bridge Academy yet, we would pay for them, we could do the online courses while they're, while they're working a shift. The, only, the three weeks that they'd have to be working offline and actually in-person would be for firearms training, EVOC, which is defensive driving, as well as, the other would be patrol procedures. So those three weeks, they have to be in-person, but all the other training, yes, so in essence, yes, we'd be paying for it, unless they already are trained and went through the Bridge Academy.
Okay, so we would be, it would be in our, in the budget for, and then the training itself, is there a charge for that?
No.
Okay, so it would be part of their pay to get the training?
It's just their hourly rate, right.
And do you anticipate, like, if there is a, someone who's retiring from full-time police work but wanted to do something like this, if, if they already went to the Bridge Academy, would they still need to get the training, or is it a different training now?
No, so if you are a retired police officer, full-time police officer, you already become certified, because you've went through the entire training. The Bridge Academy is specific towards officers that went to the abbreviated part-time academy, which no longer exists. So as a result, they, this additional training that they did not get at their abbreviated part-time training is what makes them become a certified police officer. Once they're certified, once they become certified, they have the same certifications as I do.
Ed, just looking at your, your note here, so this, normally your roster is, is 10 part-time.
That was when it's fully staffed.
This will knock you down to six?
This will knock, yeah, yeah, so this will bring us up to eight, at least.
Hook it back up to eight, yeah, okay. And I just had one quick question, on the, on the PRF itself, it says 1925 an hour?
Yes.
The narrative here said the current hourly rate is based on contractual agreements at 1975, so I wasn't sure which is.
I can check on my computer right now, if you give me a moment, I'll, I can get it exact.
There may be something just between the two that are slightly different, but check on that. This would be for the actual, it's in the posting notice, Ian, where it says the 1975 is in the posting notice?
Yes.
You know, it does, yeah. Pick up. Pick up.
It should be 1975.
Should be 1975. So, the PRF itself form...
PRF should be 1975.
1975, okay. Okay. Don't think I had a motion on the floor. Could somebody make one, please?
I move to approve the PRF for two part-time police officers at 1975 per hour, not to exceed 20 hours per week.
I'll second it.
Okay. Francine and then Rini, any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion's approved. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for checking on that, Chief. So, we'll make that change on the final version.
I did.
Got that? All righty. Okay. Let's jump over to, just a brief thought on warrant articles, Ed. I don't know, we were gonna probably pick them up next meeting as well, but if there's anything, just to remind people of due dates, and then we'll jump into your budget.
Sure. Currently, the warrants are open for submission to my office until, I almost said August, April 6, 2023.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Good. And we know we've got a couple heading our way, and hopefully, they'll all get in in the right time. I know CPC's got some. We've got a couple from the bylaw side and a few others, a couple of other townwide ones we know of.
I've got the CPC ones already.
The three of them, right?
Yes, there is. I've got the zone change one from the planning board.
Okay. And there'll be one from the check committee, I think, too.
Correct.
And I'll bring up another possible one under another part of the agenda here.
Yep. Okay. All right. So, we're hopefully gonna gather all those, and we'll get a chance and see what we've got coming at us for the town meeting, but we will get them lined up. All right. Let's talk about budget, Ed. We're gonna focus on the town administrator's budget request, I believe, and we're still working out of the 320 spreadsheet, is that right?
324.
Ooh.
Is it the one Bradley just sent out?
Didn't just send it today?
No. He just did one department, I think.
Oh, okay. Oh, dear. I don't know if I have it then. When did he send it? Sorry?
He sent one today, but...
That was just narrative for something else.
That was just one department.
Yeah. That was not for tonight's meeting, actually.
Right.
He said 324.
324?
324 was the last one that he had, which I think he did from the, that meeting on 324.
Okay. All right.
324.
Okay. I will just get the right one in my hand here. Does anybody have that handy? No. I don't. I don't have a copy of it.
I don't either.
He may have made changes in 324, but I don't know that we got a copy of it. But if you have it, you can talk us through it, I guess.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because we've got the 320. Do you have it, Francine? I've got other notes from Bradley, but it wasn't, wasn't related to your budget and 323...
I have 323. I don't have 324.
323, he said he hadn't updated the file since the 20th, but if he updated on the 24th, I don't think that got around to us. I got the 23. Which one are you working from?
I'm on, you're on 323, right, Chris?
320. I don't have one from 320.
You have 323?
There was no attachment to my 320. I had no message.
Town administrator?
The budget date, though, that it came out, Bradley, his email, is it 323? I don't have that.
Yeah.
Oh, boy. Okay. I don't have that. I've got 320.
When was that sent out?
323.
From Bradley or somebody else?
Let me go back.
Okay. From Bradley?
It's from Bradley.
Really?
323.
All right. Check my spam, maybe I went to spam land. I have nothing from Bradley. I've got a message on 323, but no attachment to it.
With all the files, no?
No. Nothing.
That's strange. You want me to forward it?
Is that under budget breakdown? No. Nope. That was today.
So, I've got... Okay. Well, let's go with what Ed's got on the screen at this point in time. So, this, this part is probably similar, the town administrator one. So, you want to start with town administrator? Yeah. That's good. Now, I have the total, the 102698. That's, that's the same as the one I have for 320. Date of 320. So, let's go with the town administrator and start there, and then we'll go to townwide. Okay? Go ahead, Ed. Start.
This is the fairly simple one. It's got two select board expenses and select board minutes on it. And then, town administrator's salary is level funded, as was the directions to fiscal year 23, depending on what COLAs may be given out for 2024. Same with the administrative wages, level funded to $15,801.64. This represents 16 hours a week from the administrative assistant, four hours a day, Monday through Thursday. And administrative expenses are also level funded to the $1,500 for the current fiscal year. And then, the town report, level funded to $500, which is what currently and for the past few years has been in that account. And then, I will just, administrative expenses, if I can do this...
Something went out, Ed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thought I closed that out.
Basically, nothing has changed there.
That's the same request, yeah.
No, not at this point in time. That's not the one I'm looking for.
And so, to date, we had talked about whether we were gonna think about a COLA or whether you all were gonna apply potentially the next step to those that we had decided on last year. So, that still would need to be looked at.
And Bradley is currently working on that. It isn't as, shall we say, simple as or direct as we would have hoped, because there are people that have left, new people that have come on, and that there have been some changes to salaries from what was, what was approved through PCFs, through both the PPBB and the select board. But Bradley is currently working on those two scenarios.
So, we should have that for hopefully our next meeting or sometime?
Yes.
Then you've got the townwide?
And that, and just, if you're interested...
Yep.
Here's, here's the breakout of the administrative expenses for the 2024. Consists of dues. Small town administrators' association is $30 for the year. MAPPA, which is the procurement, is $125 a year. And then, through the MMA for the human resources portion, is $225 a year. Toner for the town administrator and the administrative assistant. Basically, we each end up replacing those three times, we end up replacing them three times a year, which comes out to, they're $125 apiece, so it comes out to $750. Pens, labels, folders, binders, presentation, certificates, $263.45. One procurement class, they vary. They go from about $250 to $500, depending on the class. I put in 350. That comes up to 1743.45, but it's level funded to this year for $1,500.
Are any of those dues going up?
What's that?
Are any of those dues going up?
Not that we have been notified of, so...
So, even though you've got 1743, you've kept it at 1500 in your current budget request? But this is what you would like to have, although you didn't put it in the wish list?
It would be a wish list one, correct.
Okay.
Okay. Now... Go back to this.
So, this is $3,400 less than last year.
The townwide budget?
Yeah. What?
The townwide budget is a little bit less than last year?
Yeah.
It's a little bit less. This one, this one and employee benefits are still a little bit in flux. The employee benefits, one, I'm still waiting for our actual figures for both workers' comp and general insurance from Maya. I have plugged in those. The range or the risk range that they are showing from our account, but I'm hoping that when we get the actual figures, which I expected last week, we might have a few thousand-dollar savings over the estimated, shall we say, percent increase to those. But here on the townwide, internet services, and this is based on 12 months that, I believe it's $219.98 per month, which is our new contractual internet cost. With charter spectrum, we did increase that from the level we had, which was 100 over 10, to accommodate our voice-over IP implementation. And if I remember correctly, it's now, let's see, 600 over 100. So, that was an increase of about $100 in that.
It's for the upload and download speeds.
Right. And I had estimated that to come on earlier in this fiscal year, which is why you're actually seeing a little bit of a drop in the, in the internet services. But the 263976, unless charter goes up mid-year, which sometimes they do, that accommodates 12 months at our current new plan. Web page maintenance, the $5,750 is what the yearly support cost is for final site, rather than in this particular year. We knew we were gonna change over at some point in time, but we were basically based this particular year off a cost estimate of what our current, I won't say web hosting, but web implementation vendor charges us and a few months of changing over to final site. But the $5,750 is...
This is our current vendor?
This will be our new, this will be our new vendor?
The new vendor.
Before July 1st. Correct. This is, this incorporates our changeover for the website.
Okay.
Employment advertising, it's currently at $1,000. You will see that in the wish list tab, too, I put $4,000. That's kind of, reflects a bit about the fact that we will, are currently, and if it goes past June 30th, if we have to do any advertising into fiscal year 24 for either the COA director or a fire EMS chief. And it also reflects if we're gonna do, have to do any advertising for any department heads in fiscal year 24 also. Let's see. Photocopier and lease supplies. I knew we were gonna have a little bit of savings by changing over. Unfortunately, in this particular year, we're gonna go, in 23, we're gonna go over on our budget, only because it took about five months longer due to supply issues. I don't want that one. For the new one to come in, the new one is here. I've taken a look at what the new lease cost is, an average monthly overage, as far as the number of copies goes, and also incorporated the new cost of copy paper. So, come on. You don't want to cooperate.
We're gonna be able to be putting in some level of controls on that, right, in terms of charging this back to department heads? Some of the costs for their copying?
Well, we're at least gonna know where either printing or copying is...
They'll have a code for their department?
Going to, they will, they will have a code for that. So, by that, we can take a look and see, okay. I'm not gonna say misuse, but is one department maybe having usage over what was predicted or what have you? And yes, do we change our current, shall we say, system where this photocopier lease is supposed to cover, the photocopier lease, the overages, and the paper costs into something that says, okay, we're gonna cover the photocopier lease and maybe the overages, but we're actually gonna charge some of the paper back to the different departments. This one will show you the charter spectrum. It's 12 months at $219.98. So, that comes out to 263976. The webpage maintenance, it's done on one-year support. It's $5,750. The employment advertising, photocopier lease and supplies, what I did is I broke it down. The Conica copier, 12 months at $143.90. Overages, 12 months at an average of $80 overage per month. And that actually, from a high, I mean, from a low of about $45 at a low month to a high of up to 100, and I think the highest one was $160 a month. That's $960. Copy paper, we order it at six boxes a time, five times a year, five of those at $49.50, which represents the new cost, $247.50. Legal paper, usually, we'll go through about a box of that in a year. That's $43.99. So, that actually comes to 29, $2,978.29. So, a little less expensive than my first estimate. Legal is in there. Our current budget is $25,000. That's the tab one. Wish list, $35,000. Again, between, shall we say, bylaw reviews, and I will say that there's probably some items out there that... that at some point in time, we may end up taking residents or businesses up on enforcement and may have court or legal costs with. So I would like the select board to keep that in the back of your minds. Peg programming is basically a pass through. It's basically how many current prescribers per month to Charter and Spectrum at a set fee. And basically, we get that payment quarterly, and that is our pass through to East Hampton Media to cover the work they do for the town to broadcast and record the boards and committee meetings, the annual and special town meetings, or any special forums.
Ed, as their rates go up to customers, do we get proportionate increases?
Well, as, well, no, because it's basically by a prescriber fee.
It's per subscriber?
It's a percentage, so yes, a little bit. But the biggest thing, and actually, from this current year to next year, I'm actually projecting a $1,000 increase. I think we're at $67,000 this year. But the trend that has been hurting, hurting us, hurting East Hampton Media is the number of prescribers has been going down. And also keep that in mind as we talk about fiber and an alternative for an MLP, because that would be definite competition to an internet provider. So theoretically, that fee would be going down. So the pass through to East Hampton Media would also be going down. So at that point in time, would the town need to supplement that with some other type of, you know, income or revenue to keep that happening? And, you know, one of those issues or one of those options may be, is there, if the town went forward with the MLP option and offered our own fiber optic internet option, you know, would there be a fee included in there that might again cover the cost of East Hampton Media services? Let's see.
Is that the utilities part or the?
Yeah. PVPC is a direct formula pass through that's gone up. I think it's 2.5%. $1,136.32.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
When the, there was a line item or there was a contract that we received on the Board of Assessors that said that it was the PVC, is that the same thing?
That's the same thing.
So it comes in through the assessors office?
Yeah, they notify the assessors office.
That's the same.
Yeah. And actually, I forget if it was, I think Darcy brought it to me the other day, but I had also gotten it from him, but yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure it wasn't separate.
No, it's not separate. You know, as long as one of us remembers to pass that information along and put it in the budget request, we're fine.
Ed, I think there was one other, I can't remember if this was an annual fee, but the, when we joined in through PVPC on that IT collaboration, I think we had to pay a couple hundred dollars or something on that. I don't know if that is a separate thing from this, maybe?
That would be a separate thing from this and would be covered by IT services.
Okay. All right.
Town hall custodial wages are level funded to this particular year at this point. A custodian works 10 hours a week, 20 hours per biweekly payroll in this building. The same individual currently works and is, you'll see it in their budgets, cleaning and doing some maintenance work in the library and the police station. Let's see. The telephone is one of the accounts I'm now having a little bit of fun with because we're in, I'm in the process of trying to figure out exactly how much the Verizon phone bill will actually drop and what the new permanent stable TPX monthly bill will be for our voiceover IP. First one that came in actually had some one-time costs in it and what have you. So I'm looking to get one more from both Verizon and TPX to try to get that figured out. You know, currently level funded, it's $5,165. With the, extrapolating from the one bill from each of them that I've got, you will see that 12 months of Verizon and 12 months of TPX, when added together, would actually come out to about $9,000. So I'm trying to, like I say, I'd like to get one more bill to try to figure that one out. I know one thing I was amazed at with the TPX bill is I think there's almost $200 a month in federal taxes, fees and surcharges on there, so. And gas and electric, basically, and I want to take a look at this because, again, well, Eversource says their costs will be dropping in the summertime again, but I also want to take a look at what I will say is municipal aggregation just for the town government accounts and see if we can peel that back. Because currently, from what I've seen in probably, well, I'll say the last year now, just taking our current usage in town hall over the last couple of years and then putting in what the new rates have been, both on the delivery side and the supply side for electric and natural gas, I come up with like a 22.7% increase, so. And then I was working, carrying over my numbers on this one, but I got an emergency call from the library, so I went over to help them with an issue, maintenance issue they were having. So I'll go back to my, to the other, ah, come on. Spreadsheet for townwide.
While you're looking for it, I know it's my favorite topic that you've heard me ask about, but I know we're still trying to figure out, Bradley said he was more on top of this whole cow power reimbursement thing. So are we figuring out if we're getting kind of a benefit of that? If we're covering $32,000 of gas and, gas and electric. I mean, not all of that goes to, or does it all go to cow power or not every, just the electric part?
Well, no, there are two pieces we get credits on. And that's by the usage, but, and rates. So it's interesting because in dollars and cents, we're saving more now, but we're saving more now after, after larger electric bills. So we get two credits back. One for, oh God, well, one's for the cow power. And the other is for our, oh God. What are those credits called? Basically for us joining in solar aggregation. And I can't think of the right word. But we get both of those back. We get separate bills for that each month, which then Bradley actually takes because my memory is, we get the invoice from the solar net metering credits and also from the cow power. And we get a bill from those two separate entities for those. And they're broken out by the meter numbers for Eversource, so we can tie them back. we pay them 80% of what those credits are. We get about 20%. So we save probably about, I'd say, 8% to 10% on our electricity bill for going through this. It's just a convoluted and, shall we say, time-consuming manual method to get there. But yes, I mean, now, they're either being done, and a lot of this has to do with sometimes they don't bill us right away. But those transfers are now done either in the same month of the Eversource bill or a month behind, so.
It's better than it was, for sure.
Oh, much better. Much better. Absolutely. So let's see, what do we got here?
Building expenses?
Yes. So we'll go down to town hall, building expenses. because I know in the contract, in the tab one, it's basically the contractual increases. So the only increases we're seeing there are to our quarterly HVAC, I'm going to say, maintenance agreement. Our contractual agreements for fire suppression, checking, maintenance inspections. Our contractual increases for our alarm panel maintenance support. And elevator contract. So that's all we see there. Two pieces of the puzzle you'll see in the wishlist. Our one, a couple of years ago, because of the fact that we actually weren't getting what we had contracted for from our HVAC control agreement. I didn't pay that for a year because they weren't coming. Last year, I didn't get one. This year, I've asked for an updated control contract. I'm waiting to get that. I've estimated it from the last one we had in place. But this also looks at the fact that this building is now as a town hall, but was renovated, will be 13 years ago for, during fiscal year 24. We're seeing a lot more things starting to fail in the last couple of months. Had to replace some of the heating zone valves. It's about $600 a pop. My estimation that, you know, we had to fail in about two months is we're going to see more of those. Some of our electronic components for the automatic toilets and faucets are failing more, and we're actually having to replace those. This past year, actually, had to repair, take down and repair the gutter on the backside of the building because it actually had started to pull away. And there was some rot there that had to be fixed. And we're also starting to see even in, you know, our boiler and hot water systems, more maintenance a year. So the wishlist represents the building getting older and the components getting older.
Really?
Ed, does, two things. Does the increase include the generator maintenance?
Yes. And yes, we have a maintenance contract on that, so.
That would fall under that line item?
Yes, that does fall under that line item.
Okay. And the other thing is the defibrillator in the hallway. I mean, they're supposed to be checked regularly. The batteries are expensive and the pads expire. Does that fall under the jurisdiction of the fire department?
They, since I've been here, they have currently been doing that and checking it monthly. In other places I've been, that would be a responsibility of the, shall we say, the town hall maintenance. But currently, the fire department has been doing that.
Okay. So it's been doing, so they're up on, I hate to have it not. I just had an emergency situation in the battery, not on the defibrillator, but a different medical equipment, and the battery had died. So I'm just making sure that that's checked regularly. Thankfully, we haven't needed it.
Yeah. They come over and check monthly on that. And then one of the things along the way I'd like to do, and, you know, hopefully the select board would too. I don't know what it would cost at this point in time, but for whatever reason, that AED panel is tied into, what I'll say is the security system for town hall. You know, if somebody breaks in or whatever, or breaks into an office or opens up a door with a key when the alarms are set, that's where it goes off at some point in time. I'd probably like to see if it can be tied into our actual fire alarm panel, so the alarm would basically go to fire and dispatch, you know, rather than off to a, you know, security. I will say, the police are great about the times that I forget the, or someone else forgets the alarms may be set in the COA and we go in there on a Friday or whatever to change the timers for the outside lights, so. But that's, that's one thing I would like to see changed. Tech equipment is pretty stable. We are due to replace two computers next year, a number of printers. And as we get further down the line after the upgrade of the server and into cybersecurity, there should be some additional switches and whatever that we would need. The biggest boost, and this is one, I don't think you'll see a big change in it one way or the other, but I'm still, still playing with, under technical services, you will see that it's got a sizable boost to it for fiscal year 24. This is incorporating a couple of new items. One is it's incorporating that we, at least partially, and we'll finish the switch over to the Microsoft 365 Office, which is a yearly subscription. So rather than buying licenses, we're basically renting them. So the product we are currently on is $260 a year per user as part of our.
That's rental or, that's rental or purchase?
No, that's rental. Microsoft 365 is a rental.
It's per user?
I'll say subscription, per user. Correct. As we, as we're switching over to the new server, we've gone to an additional backup option for better cyber security risk. That's $260. Let's see, that's ones, $260, yeah, $260 per month. So that adds up quickly, too. And then we've got a few other new services that have come over. But the major increase there is Microsoft 365 component and backup component on the server.
Was there?
Sorry, the backup is in the cloud, is that right? There will be?
Actually, there will be two. There'll be one at a physical facility outside of town hall and one in the cloud.
Was there an option to buy the Microsoft 365?
That was a big discussion that the Technology Committee had over the last year, if we stayed with the current Microsoft products, what you buy, you know, licenses for. And yes, they could be, what we were buying for town, we were about $425 per station. But that was it till, basically, it was end of life and you had to upgrade it.
Really good.
Well, we have been wanting to upgrade this new, you know, Microsoft 360. And we also have talked for a long time about having a backup and having a new server. So I think that. that, and we have, you know, a Technology Committee who's made great recommendations, so.
Absolutely.
I think we absolutely need to just bite the bullet on that, but you mentioned a couple of possible tech equipment things, but it's not listed even under a wishlist.
Tech equipment things?
You just said printer?
Oh, no, they're, they're covered under the tech equipment, which is level funded at the 83.
Okay, so it's already, it's not additional?
No, no, it's, it's, it's in there, and, and, you know, I will go back and say, yeah, this is a little bit of price culture shock on the service end of things, I definitely think it's a right, move in the right direction, it's, in my opinion, long overdue, I mean, and the tech committee's great, and we're going to have to get into it a little bit at a time, you know, the next piece of the puzzle is having, shall we say, an annual maintenance contract, support contract with an IT vendor, you know, whether that be, if someone's having problems operating some particular software, or signing on and can do it via, over a telephone conference, or they can do it, you know, remotely with software they put on the particular desktops or laptops, or also, you know, contracting for maybe X amount of onsite service, you know, during the year, whether, you know, okay, whether a PC has died and needs to be replaced, or, you know, there's something further going on where, okay, the printer isn't interacting with those PCs or whatever, or, or new software, you know, outside of what we might have from Microsoft, needs to be installed, or upgraded.
And I think one of the things too with the server, this is going to bring us in with this backup, it's going to really improve our whole cybersecurity situation.
Oh, absolutely.
We have had no real protection, quite honestly, and I think this will be a major, major, major step forward in that regard.
And, and that's getting to be more of a, more of a, shall we say, iffy risk, you know, every year, so.
You know, whether that's ransomware, or hackers, or anything, I mean, it's just, you know, this will be a big help to have it.
Absolutely.
Taken care of through this new server, so, okay, let's keep on moving here, we've got a few more things to go, yep.
Yeah, Memorial Day is level funded at $200, if, I know that the flowers actually cost closer to 250, and that's basically all this covers, so, you know, the 250's in the wishlist. Street lighting, I look at it as contractual because of the, the electric increases that we've seen, so, yeah, again, we're seeing about a 22% increase in our street lighting just from what the supply side and the delivery side have gone to.
We've talked about switching to LED on a progressive plan, I think we talked about it when they came to speak, I mean, is that, would that help to not have such a huge increase?
It would, and, you know, my memory from when they were here, it would be five years.
Five-year plan, right.
And if the Select Board, you know, I would just say, you know, that at some point in time, you know, take a vote or whatever, direct me to reach out to Eversource and ask them what we need to do to actually put that in motion, because since they've come out with that, which they didn't use to do, that makes a heck of a lot more sense to me to do it that way than to basically buy our streetlights out from Eversource and then have to reach out to Hoyol Gas and Electric or another vendor to say, okay, can we contract with you to maintain our, our street lighting? Yeah, no, thank, thank you for bringing that up, Rini, because it's actually been in the back of my mind.
Okay.
Okay, and let's see, and H-clog is no longer, so.
So our total is about 270, 274,000?
274, 275, 77 currently, and then, the only other one that I've got pieces of, and then the Treasurer has some pieces in here, let's see.
Yeah, and just, just a note, I think Ed and I've set up the schedule for Thursday's meeting, and we're going to have there, it's going to be Town Clerk, Accountant, Town Treasurer, and the assessors, correct? If they can all show up, the four of them.
Yes, and David Zagorski's going to be here for, to do the assessors one, Lucy originally didn't think she'd make it, but she said, yes, she will be here on Thursday, and.
Jen and Bradley.
Then, yeah, Jen, and I told Jen if she isn't able to, we'll just reschedule her for the 6th with the remaining groups, and Bradley's here on Thursdays anyway, so the Town Accountant is the fourth one for, for Thursday evening.
So we'll, we'll do those, and just while you're looking for something, so, you know, we've tried to make these joint meetings with, with finance to the extent we can, I think it's just been difficult in terms of their, their members' scheduling, so even though we're normally, I think in our normal process, it would really be more Finance Committee taking the lead on some of these smaller meetings, I think we just have to jump in and do these right now because the time is against us, so.
Have they met at all?
I don't know that they've met separately, I'm not sure, we've had a couple of members come in on our meetings, but, so just to throw it out there, that certainly all the Finance Committee folks will be more than welcome, certainly to listen to this presentation tonight and get caught up, but also to join us in, excuse me, on Thursday for the four departments here in town, and then we'll, we've got other ones for the following meeting, regular meeting, which would be the 11th, I believe, that would be our, probably our final set of budget hearings on the 11th, which will most likely be Board of Health and other committees and commissions, including, for example, Cemetery Commission, Concom, anybody that.
Building.
Building Commissioner, anybody that's really, you know, got some things that they want to draw our attention to, we would make that most likely on the 11th for them, is that right, is that what I said?
Sixth.
Am I on the right day? Sorry, am I on the wrong day?
Sixth.
Sixth, I'm sorry, wrong day, I apologize.
So does that, so we have Thursday, we have Thursday's meeting, which is the Finance folks for the most part.
Finance folks on Thursday.
And then, do we have a Select Board meeting on next Tuesday?
No, that's the caucus, so on the 6th, I take that back, the 6th would be the meeting.
The remaining budget ones.
Budget one, sorry, with Board of Health, Cemetery, whomever else that we, we've got on our list here.
And then what's on the 11th?
11th, nothing, I'm sorry, I misspoke at this point, it would be a regular.
That's the regular.
Regular Select Board meeting, we haven't done any scheduling for it yet, though, yes, Robert?
Quick question, Robert Floyd, on your agenda for Thursday's meeting, you list the April meetings, and you list the 6th, the 11th, and the 25th, you do not list the 18th, which I believe is the meeting you must sign the warrant in time for it to be properly posted.
I think we're going to try to do before then, on the 11th. Yeah.
I'm not that optimistic going to be able to sign on the 11th.
I will disagree with Robert, I will disagree with the moderator once again, his dates.
Been here too long.
I know, and it reminds us.
I'll disagree with you on the date.
Sorry?
I, I have, the last drop dead date to sign the warrant would be April 24th, one week before the annual Town meeting.
It needs to be posted, so you would sign it the day you would post it? That's a lot of pressure on the Police Department.
No, the 25th, the 25th would be one week ahead.
So you, but you're not going to meet on a Monday?
Could, I said the last day.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
Possibility, but, but not probability, yeah, I agree, I agree.
And then, Robert, just to clarify, your usual Town meeting explanation night?
20th, the Thursday, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought I had.
That gives a week plus for people to chat amongst themselves.
Got it.
Okay, so we have a meeting on Thursday?
Thank you very much, yep, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Robert.
Cheers.
The 11th, we have a meeting, but we don't have one on the 13th.
Yes, absolutely.
Now we don't. Right now, we don't have one for the 13th, that's correct.
Okay, and then what, and then the 18th, I have a question warrant.
All right. Yeah, 18th and the 20th, we probably do need to, we'll have a better sense after we get through this in the next.
Okay.
Next couple of days, certainly as we get through.
Am I in trouble? You came back.
I did.
Did you forget something?
I verified the PRF.
Oh, yes. Okay, sure, come on up, yep, we'll take you.
The PRF should read 1925, is that what I said, or did I say 19?
You said 75.
The PRF is correct.
Okay.
The job posting is wrong, I'll change the job posting.
Oh, okay.
1925.
1925 is the correct.
Back to the original.
Okay. I went back, I checked it.
All right, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you for the attention to detail, that would have created a mess for me, thank you.
All right, we got it.
Ian, the next time, feel free to just text me that type of information, you did.
Oh, my gosh. He was too busy talking, he didn't hear you.
He's in the presentation.
Sorry about that.
Busted.
Thanks, all right, we got it, so we'll make that change, okay, all right, okay, so that takes care of townwide budget, any, is there anything else that we need to talk about on this, I just.
Just want to.
Yeah, go ahead.
A few pieces I've got in townwide.
Okay, yep.
Just to make your way, and I'm going to do this, just so it's easier to see.
Yeah.
Hopefully this, and even that doesn't do it, darn it, come on, man, it's getting there. Okay, so, contributor retirement, Treasurer Collector does, workers' comp is one of the ones that I am waiting for to actually see our actual cost for fiscal year 24. Fiscal year 23 amended was $80,131, this is the account that we've also got the $6,000 invoice to adjust this year for the audit adjustment, I was told that our risk factor shows that this probably should increase by about 12%, so, right now, as an earm, basically a benchmark, I put in the 94, 744, 85, I'm actually hoping when we get the actual, which I hope is in the next few days, that it drops a little bit. Unemployment compensation is kind of, I don't, the Treasurer Collector and I probably share a little bit of that, I'll have to see where we still are with credits, maybe we can drop that a couple of thousand dollars for fiscal year 24. Group health is under the Treasurer Collectors, I will say, group health insurance, you know, if we think about actually going for a fire EMS override and talking about putting some full-time people in here, the group health insurance would probably, probably should be one of the areas increased, and the group life insurance would have, be affected by that. Insurance general, as we go down, is another one that I deal with, and again, this year we had that at $113,040, from what they've told me our increase percentage-wise might be, I've got a benchmark in there of 122, 535, 36, and this is our, our property, our casualty, our liability, professional liability as far as Board and Committee members go, and also covers police, police and fire coverage in there, so those are still in a flux, I actually probably reach out to our insurance representative from MIA about two times a week to see if we've got an update, and, but, like I say, yeah, because I know those are large increases.
Yep.
And that's about all I've got.
I just want to comment on this category, for the people at home who may not be able to read all these numbers, but it tracks from 2015 to the present, and in this category, expenses have gone up over $900,000, so, I mean, that, that's, that has almost doubled over the years, so, just as a point of information, I'm sure everybody's having the same experience with their personal benefits increasing that much, but it's, it's really a bear.
Yeah, it's ridiculous. Yeah, so from 2015, a million six, up to a projected 2.4 million for 23, or 24, I'm sorry, or 2.5 for 24.
2.5, yep.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that really.
2.584, that's almost 2.6.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and maybe, just since I ended up throwing in the, the little bit of piece for the Select Board expenses that goes into your other, it's on that other page, so just so people know, we have Select Board expenses, and then Select Board expenses minutes, this year, the request for Select Board expenses is $6,488.75, which is about $4,600 more than last year, and if I can find my sheet, why did I do that? So, let's see, so we, we basically have two things, so we have a spending trend in general, the expenses line last time was budgeted at 1,400, I think, and then later it was reduced a little bit, but then, all of it was spent basically on our membership and Mass Municipal Association dues, and a yearly subscription to the Gazette, and then, I think it was 1,800 in 2023, I'm not seeing that right offhand, but I think it was 1,800 in 2023, and then, let's see, so that was dues in the Gazette, again, that's already totaled $1,517 for FY '23, and then, some of the funds there were also used for a legal ad that we needed to put out for posting the RFP for the audit services, so at mid-year, when I put this budget in, we only had a couple hundred, $282 left in that budget line, and then the budget minutes line was budgeted at 1,500 in FY '22 and used in its entirety, and so the request for '24 is a significant increase calculated on assumptions, these are not known figures, but it would be $500 for two new Select Board members to attend any MMA, DLS trainings, a 5% increase in current MMA dues and Gazette subscription, and then, an additional $5,000 put in as the cost of engaging the Collins Center or some other firm to undertake a personnel search, most likely as needed at some point in time for the Town Administrator's replacement. Nothing else is budgeted for other advertising or legal ads in that line, so the expense request line has gone up a fair amount for this coming year because of that big $5,000 chunk put in there, and the assumption of the new members coming on Select Board that could use a little bit of exposure and training to our government processes. Select Board minutes, the request this year has been basically the same at $1,640, and this has been based on 26 open meetings, and I'm, I'm trying to be optimistic here, but 26 open meetings, 85% of which are three hours or less, and billed at $60 an hour, and 15% of meetings to be greater than three hours, everybody quiet now, 15% of meetings to be three hours or greater and billed at $80, so, the executive session notes are taken by the clerk of the executive session, and we are not, you know, having any charge on those, so that's basically the.
So time is money.
Time is money in this case, yes, so that's why I'm, we've gotten a little bit, we're, we're getting there, so the, you know, the budget meetings are always a tough one, so, that's why we've tried to break them out, but, anyway, so that kind of explains just the change there for the Select Board line here, okay?
So are you saying we're going to wrap this meeting up in 12 minutes?
Let's see how fast we can talk, I don't think so, but anyway, so, I think that's all we have on, in terms of the budget issue, is there anybody have any questions on that for Ed, or, we'll come back to further discussions on the budget at some point anyway, so, but that at least gives us a good overview of what's, what's coming at us, and some of the unknown still that you'll have to tidy up, but, okay?
Thank you.
All right.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, now, we have the Fire Chief Search Committee charge, and again, John having to leave, and he's going to be heading that up, I think I would like to push that off, eeh, I don't really want to push it off, but we do, do need to have this explained a little bit more, we had developed not so much the charge yet, but we had talked about the committee composition, and had determined that, including someone of senior fire status from another town being on the search committee, and then since that time, and I think it was a time when, Rini, you weren't here, John came in with an idea of having somebody come in and basically be a part-time person to overlap with our current Fire Chief and do an. to overlap with our current fire chief and do an assessment of the whole fire EMS service. And he had somebody in mind who might do that. We don't have much clarity, though, I think, in terms of what the assessment process really consists of. And certainly, if there was somebody who might be interested, I think we would want to, you know, figure out a way to meet that person and have a mini discussion with that person ahead of time. So I think at this point in time, we probably need to hold on this until next Tuesday... Whatever, our next regular meeting, whatever day that is. And that's actually now, that's not going to be until...
The 11th.
That's not until the 11th, huh? We may see if we can figure this in earlier. I know John's not going to be here on the... He's already told me he can't be here on the 30th. So we'll see if we can figure out a way to tie this one back in, maybe on one of our budget nights just to have a clarity on this.
I think we should.
We don't want to delay this anymore here.
No, absolutely.
And the assessment process might be a great idea. It's just not much clarity in terms of how this really is undertaken. So we'll come back to that. ARPA application tracker, I think we had in our packets. There is one new application here. And I guess the question for anybody, are we wanting to take up any of these this evening? I think there is one that we have to take up. And that is what we had voted on at select board, I don't know, a meeting or two ago, about the $15,000 allocated to allow the town administrator to cover overages. And so that is a request that is put in now.
I thought we already voted on it.
Yeah, I thought we voted on it. We said it in meeting, but we didn't vote it on the ARPA list. So I think I just would...
We did. We have it in our packet.
Yeah, we have the ARPA. So I just would like to take it up as an ARPA... An actual ARPA request. And of course, I can't find the application number, but anyway.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we allocate $15,000 from ARPA funding to cover any expenses to prevent any deficit spending.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. So, Rini and then Joy.
I've asked you consider one little...
Yeah.
Can we say caveat to that? And it's not changing the $15,000 in total amount, but I had talked to Chris about this. And it may make my life and the fire chief's life easier if you allow me to... I'm not even going to say equal halves, but split that into part A and part B, one being for fire and one being for, I will say, municipal side.
But it won't exceed $15,000.
Because of the fact when we get to the end and are trying to track and move things back, if we have those two separate accounts to charge to...
Sort of separate accounts in that regard.
It'll make lives much simpler.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. That makes sense.
Okay.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, do you need...
We need to just amend that to...
Amend.
Just amend it to be, it'll be part, you know, A for fire and part B for...
Okay, I'm willing to do that. Just change the motion so that part A would be fire and part B would be for other department expenses.
That's fine.
Okay, I'll second that amendment.
Yeah, but I'll still be within the $15,000, okay? All right. So, Rini and then Joy, any further discussion on that? I believe it's actually going to be proposal number 41 on our list at this point in time. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's approved.
We also had the... Well, we haven't been willing to vote for things that we don't have a dollar amount to accept for that. But we did discuss possibly having a vote of support to encumber additional funds for the Public Safety Feasibility Committee. And I think that was also indicated potentially in some grant applications, correct? That we might be willing to put forth a little bit of... Not in kind. What do you call it? Match.
Yes, okay, right, for those applications, yes.
Those applications.
Yeah, that was here, yeah.
So anyway, we don't know. We're interviewing the two firms on Tuesday of next week. So we don't have a dollar amount. Right now, we have $125,000. A combination of 50 plus 75. So again, I think having an additional 50,000 for... To be able to not necessarily go up to 200,000, which was originally suggested as where we might land. If you remember correctly, we did reduce the requirements of the RFQ when it went up the third time to be able to reduce hopefully the charges. So for example, instead of looking for years of maintenance estimates, we just asked for one year of maintenance estimate. So we're hoping it will come in at less than that, but we don't know until we bid.
Right.
So I think we talked about...
Negotiate the fee.
Negotiate the fee, right.
So we have 125 now, which is 75, I believe, from...
From ARPA and 50 from the legislators.
Correct. And I'm trying to...
And we did... Did we vote to... Yeah, we voted for the 75. That was an actual vote. But I don't know if you comfortable... We... No form was filled out, I don't think. We can ask Mark if you'd rather have me to pass along to Mark to go ahead and update a... Would you rather update or a new RF... New application?
Yeah, I think that's one of the things we ought to just discover here as a committee because I did this on the match for the Clean Water Grant. I made an amended proposal, so it was 16, and I made a 16A.
Yeah.
But put in an actual application and labeled it 16A, so it was noted as it was amended. I think I would prefer to do that rather than calling it a new application in that request. But this one, I believe it's 28, so it would be 28A.
Okay.
And, you know, we could put in perhaps for tonight, just to give you some wiggaruma, you know, a not-to-exceed amount, 50,000 or something. That would get you, what, 175? Does that seem like a reasonable amount to...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go with? So that would be an amended amount, but we could, you know...
Okay.
We could... Is everybody okay if we followed up with the paperwork? If we agreed on something like that tonight and follow up with paperwork? Or what would you prefer?
However you like to do it. I mean, you're the one that's... I mean, I don't want to have a different standard than anybody else. But we also, you know, indicated that on applications, so I don't want to delay it too much either.
Right.
I can send an email over to Mark and ask him to update his application, call it 28A. So he'd be taking in the... A new form and calling it 21A.
28A.
Can he refer to or cut and paste some of the original stuff?
Yeah. Okay. And it would just be, you know, adding the...
Well, I'm comfortable because I know next Tuesday is when we're doing the interviews and probably soon after that, we'd have to negotiate. So to know beforehand that we have up to 175 would be very helpful than to negotiate without having any funding source.
Yeah. So could we... I think we could take a motion for that tonight with the proviso that we get an application in by our meeting on Thursday, this Thursday. So we have it in-house? Could we do that? Do we have one?
No, it was...
Do we get the... Provide the amended application in?
On Thursday.
For this Thursday, the 30th?
Okay.
So we're not delaying forever and ever, but...
Okay.
Because we wouldn't have another meeting to vote on the actual amount before you might need it for negotiation time, is all I'm thinking.
Okay.
So if somebody would make a motion for that amended amount for number 28, proposal number 28, I believe it is.
Okay. I'll make a motion to increase the ARPA funding to the Public Safety Building Feasibility Committee by an additional $50,000 so that $125,000 is available for funding to negotiate with a finalist firm.
Second.
All right. Rini and then Joy. And just to clarify, that $125,000 from ARPA, plus your 50, so 175 altogether. All right. Any further discussion on that?
Did I say up to? So $50,000, so that there is a total of up to... Yeah, 125 of ARPA funding.
Yeah, so up to 50,000.
Right.
So if you don't quite need it, we'll take some back, okay?
Yep.
All right, so up to 50,000. Okay, that's the motion. All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. And we'll look for amended application on Thursday night, for Thursday night, okay? Though we have two others assigned from the financial software, which are still on hold. We've put money aside for that. And we have still the Board of Health request for the inspection services, which we should take up as part of their budget discussion. And if we can accommodate things there, we know we've got a request in here at least under ARPA for the Board of Health continuation of inspection services at 30,000. And then the other one we have online, as one we haven't acted on yet, is the Canal Bowling sign replacement, I believe it was, for $20,000. And Ed, you had said that you were expecting other ones in from Canal, but we haven't seen them? Or have we...
Well, I originally told her last Wednesday at noon, which was the 22nd. I believe I got an additional request yesterday and I was not about to...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I figured, okay, I told you when it needed to be here for tonight's meeting. So one of the next meetings, the select board can take that up.
Okay. Let's figure out... You and I can figure out when we could take that one up. We, you know, we know we've got the Board of Health one. We've got to, you know, discuss one way or another in our budget meeting and/or in ARPA. And then we've got the financial software ones. So I guess I'm thinking, depending on the amount of money involved for the bowling lanes folks, if we had to prioritize, it would be good to see whatever other applications, whatever this one is that's come in and not just take this one and assume that the other one isn't more important. I mean, I don't know. We're running down, just in terms of this.
What's the balance?
Yeah, hang on a second here. I did this a minute ago. So let's see. With what we approved, plus what we have put aside for the... 394. I believe what we've put aside for the financial software, we're at about a million seven. And so with another 65,000 tonight, let's see...
What's the 65,000 tonight?
15 for the overages and 50...
Yeah, okay.
65,000.
So 65, so I think we'd be... Hang on a second. I think that leaves us around 75,000 total left.
And that includes the financial software?
Financial software is included, the two we did tonight. It doesn't include Board of Health request or the Canal, which is another 50,000.
Yeah, that's 50,000.
So if those were taken up, we'd really be down to 25,000 max left. And I will double-check these figures, but that's... We're draining it down pretty well. So I'll be sure the math is all correct here, but that's what it looks like at a quick glance tonight. But we have put aside the 128,700 as committed, even though we haven't taken a vote on it. We're committed to having new financial software. We're just not committed on which company it is yet. Right, I think?
Mm-hmm.
And you've had presentations, though, on these financial software programs, right?
Three of them, yeah.
What is the plan for making a decision on that?
I've got a team that is going in so many different directions right now. And this is actually a time-consuming portion of it because we have to follow up with telephone calls to municipalities that already have it. And in some cases, we may want to, if it's not too far away, go actually visit and sit and look at somebody that uses it, so... I want to wrap it up as quick as possible. It's just trying to get everybody's...
Does the price usually include a year's worth of support and training?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that is where we are for ARPA. Everybody okay? We'll keep on moving?
Yep.
All right, let's take a look at select board policy review. I think some of these now have cleared and maybe ready for signature, although there's one that I noticed, I think it still had a 2017 date on it.
They all had...
Okay.
I asked Judy to print them out because it was quicker from the webpage than finding the files. And I will bite the bullet. I probably should have been clearer and said you need to print the ones from the section that says posted for the 10 days. And she posted the existing approved ones. So in your...
In the packet.
In your packet, you have the correct amended ones.
Okay.
My apologies.
Yep, no, I'm just trying to get the right ones here. So we have alcohol hours, procedures for dog hearings, special municipal employee designation.
And I will let you know that I did finally look at this and figure out that the last one where the actual list was updated was previous to the select board approving the Conservation Commission's wetland consultant as a special municipal employee, which we did like a year and a half or two ago. So I added that to that list.
Okay, all right.
Purchase orders.
Sorry, where is that one on here? The... Where is he? The conservation?
At very bottom right. So after the open space, it says Conservation Commission Wetlands Consultant.
Not on mine. I've got the... Not on mine. It doesn't? Hmm. Okay, on the copy I have. With Lucy's signature on it. It doesn't have that on there.
No, it wouldn't because I added it afterwards.
Added afterward, okay.
I added it today.
Afterwards. I see, okay.
So we'll sign those.
All right. And then we have purchase orders and proposed policies and... Procedures and policies and regulations for select board.
Free cash.
Yeah, now the only one out of that bunch, purchase orders, this new one we got tonight, still has the August 16 date on it. If you just check that on your copy for us to sign.
The August 16th.
And purchase orders. All the others have a...
It does, yep.
Has a February or a March date. All the others do.
Yeah, it does.
Huh?
On the purchase order one, the date appears as August 2016 still on this version that we have.
This is the one that would be approved.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we've got those five, is that right?
Four.
Four.
Alcohol hours, procedures for dog... No, there is five.
Five. There's five.
I gave up the purchase orders. I can't count. Special municipal employee designation and proposed procedures and policies and regulations for select board.
And then free cash hasn't passed yet? That was another one drafted on the list, on the agenda here.
It's not in the packet.
Not in the packet.
Not in the package.
No, okay. So we'll have to take a look at that. All right. And you were working... You were going to get some information eventually, Trini, about the whole traffic control thing?
I picked up half of it. I have the description. I have to actually type up what would go in a section for the description of... And I have it in my head, but I have to...
School zone?
The school zone.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm updating the other part of that, that has the language around people with disabilities.
Okay. What... Since you gave me this one, let's get all these together, though, so that we all have to sign these policies?
Yes, you do.
Okay. So why don't we start down there?
So the other piece of the traffic control one was also the part that Chief Illingsworth had brought up about the truck traffic and all that. So I'm not sure if that's important to add, but if it is, add it when you send it, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so we've got those five to sign off on. Thank you very much. Couple more to finish and then we'll be done with this, but at least it's...
And is there a motion from someone and a second from someone and a vote by any chance?
Probably not, yeah.
As you're signing?
All right. Can we have a motion to approve these five policies that have been redrafted and posted accordingly?
Okay. I move to approve the revised policies on alcohol hour policy, procedures for conducting dog hearings, special municipal employee designation, purchase orders and proposed procedures and policies and regulations for select board.
So not free cash?
Not free cash.
I'll second.
All right. Francine, then Joy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, next up is opioid settlements. I don't know why I have such a problem getting that...
There's an extra "I" in there.
I know.
Opioid.
I keep putting more vowels than it needs.
There's plenty in there already.
It's got enough vowels. It doesn't need any more. Okay. Opioid settlements. We have a whole package of stuff here, Ed, and I know we have to do this by the 18th, so...
Yes. And if you just, you know, want to take it into consideration, I mean, everything seems in play. I print it out because it's DocuSign. So when you actually go to approve it or... And I wouldn't turn away the money, but yeah, it just authorized me to sign the DocuSigns. But the other piece of it, and I got it from one of my peers in the STAM membership... But the other piece of it, and I got it from one of my peers in the STAM membership, there's a draft town meeting article in there to establish a stabilization fund for them. And then I also printed out what KP had to say back in, I think it was the end of January about it, and also DLS.
Do we need to vote on the stabilization fund?
I mean
Or what is it, bylaw now, or?
I mean, at some point, you're going to the Select Board, I, I mean, I'll take, I'll take a deeper look at that and I would probably be the one, I suppose, to submit it to the Select Board for consideration on being contained in the annual town meeting warrant, you know, so the Select Board will have to take a vote to
So you wanna include it on the town meeting warrant this year?
It, yeah, it should be.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, because what it, basically setting up the stabilization, what they're saying is, okay, here's these funds that are coming in. You can do that, but we're gonna treat them as O1 general fund, which means if you haven't committed them by the end of that fiscal year, they're gonna disappear and fall into free cash. By setting up the stabilization account for them, we will actually, actually, at a town meeting, whatever we got in for the year, it'll be a town meeting article, we wanna, we would like to place X amount of dollars in the opioid settlement stabilization fund, which going in, it's a majority vote. And then when we wanted to use them and appropriate, it's a two-thirds vote out of the town meeting to take them back out.
So you need two votes from us tonight?
Doesn't have to be tonight, no.
So let's, since we haven't really had a chance to plow through this, and this is the opioid settlements from Teva, Allergen, CVS, Walgreens and Walmart, so this is different than the one that we had signed on to earlier.
Correct.
So please just hang on to your package of information and when we get back to it, just, we won't have this copied again.
Good idea.
So we'll, we'll be sure we get it back on the agenda, because this has to be in by the 18th. So we will pick a time to get that looked at more thoroughly and any comments on that. Okay, I think we're down to any other business, I can't wait until the next regular Select Board meeting. Is there anything out there?
Yes, I wanted to mention that quite a while ago, it was over a year ago, we got a request to the Select Board for a naming rights to the East Street Bridge. It was presented by the Garzka family on behalf of John Garzka. And we had at the time decided that we don't really have a policy on naming of buildings and structures and whatnot. So we have since developed a policy and a bylaw.
Bylaw.
Bylaw. And so I feel like we're somewhat, you know, responsible to readdress this application. I did speak to a representative of the family who was very, very interested. Her dad was decorated prisoner of war. He was also a very devoted town employee, high-rise superintendent, tree warden and so forth. It's not uncommon for bridges in Massachusetts to be named after veterans. And so I relooked at the bylaw, I spoke to Chris about it, and we do, it sounds like, need to set up a public hearing. And then there has to be an article in front of the town meeting. All the other bullet points seem to be addressed in the application. So I'm just wondering if we can review that application again as a Select Board and perhaps put out a potential date for a hearing so that then we could address whether or not we wanna put this in front of the voters.
Yeah, and I think this came to us longer ago than a year, I think this was in 2021. So it's been a long time, because it took us a while to get this bylaw. And place, let alone approve.
And there's another one in regards to
The naming?
The naming of
Playground.
The playground, yes. And it was interesting because, and I don't know if the Park Commission came up with this or not, but the CPC application went in through, you know, the friends of the family group to get the funds to do the playground and the Park Commission kinda came back and it's not in a lot of detail, but said, okay, and we'd like to put in a town meeting article for the naming rights, you know, for the playground, so.
Well, that's, the request is for CPA funds.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question about that, maybe you know. I wasn't sure when I passed the message along from CPA since I was away when they had their meeting. Remember the Park Commission received funding from the Community Preservation Account? And they went out to bid for, was it a fieldhouse or bathrooms or something? So it wasn't the playground, right? That wasn't part of it, okay.
That was not part of it.
That came up at the meeting and then I wasn't really sure. Yeah, so it's, it's separate.
That was for the fieldhouse, which would have contained bathrooms.
Yeah.
Would have contained
Storage, probably.
An area for concession stands and storage, but because of the bathrooms, not even the concession stand with the, with the water, that requires the development of a septic system. And at the time, I believe the septic system alone was like 110 or 20,000 dollars.
Yeah.
But no, the playground was not included in there.
Okay, just wanted to be sure.
So, so the reality is, from looking at the details of the bylaw, it looks like a public hearing, not a public meeting.
Yeah.
But a public hearing needs to be had
Yeah.
to discuss this, or be's, the two of them perhaps. Tell us the timeframe, I know this has gotta be advertised in the Gazette, right? For public hearings or?
Oh, you're gonna love me.
I mean
So tell me, where it says public hearing, does it say in accordance with Mass General Laws, chapter such and such or whatever?
I don't know that it does.
So it's up to interpretation what a public hearing means?
Right, exactly.
I don't think it's got that specific.
And so we do not have a charter for me to go look at. I will look at our bylaws and see if there's anything general in the bylaws of what a public hearing is. So other than that, I would probably say it's at least a two-week notice ahead of time and it'll be a matter of interpretation if it has to, or if it needs to be advertised in a local newspaper.
I can pull it up, I've got it, I had it right there a minute ago.
You're looking up the bylaw?
Darn it, I thought I had it. I had it a minute ago. I think there was nothing that talked about MGL in there, if I recall.
I don't recall anything either, but I had to ask the question.
Yeah, no, valid.
I didn't see anything in there.
Oh, gosh. Now, this is, yeah, this was one that was done a little bit ago. So, okay, so a couple of weeks out, so, but, so the main thing is, well, are you saying that if it wasn't per MGL, it wouldn't have to be a hearing? It could be a meeting and it wouldn't?
I'm staying, no, I'm still saying that it's a public hearing. The biggest piece of the puzzle is, is a public hearing under Mass General Laws will require that newspaper advertisement, so. Let me see what I can find in any of our other bylaws that might have a definition of public hearing or what I can find.
Can we add it to an upcoming agenda, only because it's a little tight turnaround on this? I just don't wanna, you know, I mean, it has to wait, that's one thing, but, you know, this is something that we probably should address since it's already
Sure.
Presented to us quite a long time ago.
Yeah, so this is one, it was actually approved in June of '22, the bylaw, and approved by the AG in September of '22. Talks about, the criteria would be nominees past residents, in-town, extraordinary service to the town, significant contribution, designated item to be named relates to the individual's service or contribution to the town, and no such structure, et cetera, should be named for any living person or commercial enterprise. And so what you said is you think that that was dealt with in the application itself, perhaps, hopefully?
Yes, I think that, I mean, his, I think he helped build the bridge.
Well, I think he started probably
Helped actually build the bridge.
Yeah, so all it just says is the Select Board may consider additional standards and criteria and following a duly advertised public hearing, the Select Board shall forward its recommendation to special, special or annual town meeting.
Is that, how do you interpret duly advertised public meeting?
Right, exactly.
That's all it says.
That's a good question, is it by the agenda or? Well, let's propose that it be added to, the hearing be part of our upcoming meeting, I think. And I mean, I don't know what, what date we have to back into it, but
Yeah, because a couple of weeks out, we'd be talking, whatever we're talking, we'd be Well, you're talking
And then the question is, can it be, it can be added as an article and then passed over? We have to, right? Or does it really have to be voted on first?
Yeah, that would be a question, but I mean, if we have a hearing, whatever.
I mean, a public hearing.
Uh huh. I mean, a couple of weeks out would
I think there's something in the actual Select Board handbook about specific public hearings.
You could check to the Select Board handbook on that, that's a good point.
What I read before I go to bed.
Okay, could check back.
At least at a tentative date, then, we have a Select Board meeting that we know of on the 11th and the 25th. And then we talked about most likely having to add one on the 18th for the warrants. So we could do it then? So maybe you could do it on the 18th, that would give us a month.
And you also had the 20th penciled, right?
Yeah, 20th is penciled, that's Robert's meeting, that's Robert's meeting.
That's Robert's, okay.
It's the 13th that's also penciled.
By the 18th, though, that would be
We would have to have the hearing, vote on it, and then have it be submitted as an article.
Right, but that might be the night that we're trying to sign the warrant? Is that what I understood, Ed?
Right, so that might be on the later side. So the 11th, but that's exactly two weeks, so that doesn't give us the two-week notice. Unless we do it on the 18th and we propose it as a possibility and vote on it that night. Otherwise, it would have to be one of the Thursday meetings. If we were gonna do it for this time around.
Yeah. 30th and the 6th. We had not planned on a meeting the 13th unless we need it for warrant articles. So maybe there could be the hearing on the 13th, would that give us enough time out?
April 13th.
That's two weeks from Thursday, though, Ed, I mean, you tell me, in terms of, what do we need for notice in the paper, how much do we, what do we have to say, how much?
About $275 worth.
That I figured out.
They're not cheap. You gotta state the reason, the place, the time.
Okay. So then you wanna do the 13th?
Well, and if, but then does it have to appear in the Gazette for two full weeks? Or we just have to?
I think so.
Don't, doesn't the Gazette put these out like on Fridays or something, or is that?
And they put them out each day, but it's like a three-day hiatus from the time you submit it for them to fit it in.
Yep.
I have a feeling we're gonna have a meeting on the 20th for the warrant anyway. I mean, you already said tonight that you can go up until the 24th, so.
Yeah, the issue is, most of these just refer to special cases, there's special boards or then special permits, so there's not like a general.
Right. I'm fine with any of them, I'm sort of penciled in every Tuesday, Thursday until
Lucy reminded us tonight that the 17th is actually a holiday, Monday.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Oh geez.
Good to know.
That was when bylaw committee was going to do their public meeting on E360 demonstration, so that's a question, if Town Hall is closed that day, can we still do that meeting? Would you have to do it by Zoom?
Nope.
We do it by Zoom? Could we do it by Zoom even? Just because it's a holiday?
Not a public holiday.
Okay. Yuck. Forgot about the 17th, we all did, okay. So
We'll pick another date tomorrow.
Yeah, well, can we, what do we think is a possibility for a date for these, while we're on it, if we can narrow it down a little bit?
Well, you said that if we, if we propose that it has to be put in the paper and they're not gonna take it until Friday, it won't be publicized until when? The 8th or, you said they do them on Fridays?
No, they do them any day of the week.
Okay.
It's just that you have to, it's generally three days' notice for, from the time you send it to they actually publish.
It's gonna take them three days to actually get it in the paper, so.
Okay.
So that's the rub here. If we could get something to them even on the 31st, I don't know, they wouldn't get it in the paper until the 3rd or the 4th at the earliest, probably.
So that would make, that would then make
Yeah, the 18th or the 20th.
The 17th and the 18th is the first possible date.
I think we should just shoot for the 18th, because I know we're probably gonna have to have a meeting between the 18th and the 24th.
Okay, good.
Let's say the 18th.
Let's try that, and then Yeah, all right, that works. Okay, and if you wanted to give a sample of a public hearing notice, Ed, we can help fill in the blanks on that, if you want to. We have a bylaw committee meeting, right, tomorrow?
Yeah.
Tomorrow, even? If we could be of any help with that, or, I don't know how specific you need to be on the purpose level, but we can help if we need to, okay? All right, moving on.
Thank you.
Thanks, all right. Old business, anything coming up there? We need to, I think one thing we've, we omitted, we forgot to, probably we've gotta amend the charge on the Public Safety Building Committee to include those alternate members.
Yeah, and I keep bringing it up, saying that we need to do that. We don't have, we don't have a copy of it. Basically, what they voted, and what we voted, was to allow up to two associate members that are non-voting, except if needed for a quorum. So that's basically it.
And hang on, because I reached out and I'm not sure if I gotta, oh, I'm gonna have to go hook this back into KP Law about that particular question, and I think they got back to me. I think they can be utilized to fill in for somebody and vote, but they cannot be used to count towards a quorum.
Oh, really, that's like the opposite.
Yeah.
So hang on a second, let me see, they leave response to that one.
Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll take up the, can we take up the PCFs while you're gone?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Or you wanna do the warrants?
The warrants might be easier, the miss.
Oh, yeah, okay, let's, yeah, let's go with the
All right, let's do it.
Yes, thank you.
Payroll deduction 23-33A for $176,122.17. Payroll 23-35 for $308,425.17. Payroll deduction 23-35 for $48,921.89. Bender warrant 23-36 for $50,721.11. Payroll warrant 23-37 for $321,538.2. And payroll deduction 23-37 for $51,690.72.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Looking, looking like normal expenses here in terms of our total payrolls and so forth? This looks pretty much on, on target with what we usually are spending on these, okay?
And the warrants are in your packet.
Yes, we've got them all, yep.
So the details are there.
Yep. Okay, thank you for that.
Okay.
All right, then let's jump back to a couple of the PCFs, if we can do that. We're waiting on Ed. So we've got some for the Fire Department, the Transfer Station and the COA. Can we start with the Fire Department?
Sure.
And
Sure. Do you wanna do them all together?
Well, we can, I
Is there any ones that are questionable?
No, that I
Yeah, there's, I have a question.
Question on one, aren't you?
Jacqueline Plantier, if you look at the PCF, there's no title.
Well, maybe let's, maybe it's easy just to do these one by one, just so we make sure that we have it. Sometimes things get omitted and we
Okay.
don't have all this correct here, so let's take up Russell Hatch II. This is an equipment coordinator. As needed, part-time, non-benefited.
Okay.
And this would be
Okay, you're talking about Russell Hatch?
Yes.
If you look at under the comments, they were gonna utilize Russell Hatch to do this, to be the public information assistant? Do you see the attached kinda? Do you see the attached kind of job description?
Is that a new?
I remember, yeah, I'm asking.
Did we talk about that?
I don't recall this. Well, can, so.
I'm still looking for it in the packet here. Hang on. Okay, here we go. I have it, yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I see this.
Utilizing Russell's work experience in computer technology, we're adding equipment compliance coordinator title to his job as he will coordinate our website, social media, and electronics. Signed off by PQB. Was it rescored?
I don't.
I don't know.
There's a note here on the, on the thing going from.
It says subject to, it looks like Board of Selectmen approving new scale, but nothing about the job description.
Well, and going from, from 1776 an hour to 1826 an hour, so 50 cents more an hour. Part-time, non-benefited, right? So using his experience in computer technology.
Was this position, was this posted?
Did you read the duties?
I've seen this, yes. I don't know anything about this.
I don't either.
Let's hold on him and come back, because Ed may have more information after having talked to John.
All right, so let's.
Let's jump to the next.
Brady Williams.
Russell aside, let's move. You want to move to Brady?
Brady Williams comments, will work for DM as available shifts are open, does not add to budget, so it's basically on-call position, no benefits. I'll make a motion to approve Brady Patrick Williams for position of, is this, these forms are still hard to read, I'm telling you.
Firefighter, EMT.
Yeah, firefighter, EMTB, as needed, part-time, non-benefited, 1842 an hour.
Second.
All right, Rini then Francine, I was reading then Joy, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Brady Williams approved.
Yeah, the next one is Taylor Pachell. Now, his name is familiar. I thought he had been on it before, but anyway, he is coming in as firefighter, as needed, non-benefited, and we can do, maybe, oh, we're not gonna do them together, okay. This is $15 an hour, so initial part-time, non-benefited, $15 an hour.
Okay.
And the position is firefighter, as needed.
As needed, okay.
Second.
Rini then Joy, okay.
Signed off by everybody.
Signed off on everybody, yeah. Now, just clarity on this one, the effective date here is January 2023. So is this guy?
Already working.
Already working?
And we're just getting this one now?
Which one?
Taylor Pachell.
Taylor Pachell.
Haskell.
I'm gonna guess real quick. I'm seeing that one and Plantier at $15 an hour. I'm guessing he's bringing them to the minimum wage, that they were on our roles.
Oh, okay, yep, okay.
That makes sense.
Probably right.
Which would make it retroactive if they worked in between.
It would be good to have a note there.
That would be good to understand that, yes, but if you look at the present status, it says 1454 an hour.
Okay, yep, okay, good, thank you.
Deal? That's fine.
So that would be retroactive essentially to January 1st, 2023.
I'm guessing that's the next two as well.
So I will, I'll make that as a motion.
Okay, all right, and Joy had seconded that, I believe, right?
Uh huh.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
But Ed, just so you know, on Plantier's PCF, there's no job title.
Yeah, Jacqueline Plantier.
It's been signed by everybody.
As needed, non-benefited.
Right.
Also on board already at 1425, so this must be retroactive to.
January.
It's under the fire department, so.
Part-time.
Just a minimum wage increase, that's the note, yeah, there was the note.
Okay, there it is, yep.
Yep, yep, yep. So what were you saying, Francine? There was no?
There's no, down below.
There's.
There's no job title.
Yeah, we don't know what she does.
Under present status and proposed status, where the salary is?
Oh, the budget.
There's no, I don't know.
There's nothing under Taylor either.
Up in the second set of boxes, though, part-time, non-benefit, and we just see that somewhere. I just saw firefighter.
You're right.
It just says Department Fire.
No, there's no position title, yeah, on Jacqueline. On Tyler's, it says firefighter. It doesn't say anything.
Yeah, I mean, this one's got account to be a charge. We've got fire and EMS.
Fire and EMS, right. Which you might just leave in there just in case, but you're right, it does not have a position title.
Okay, so. Could we get that filled in somewhere?
I don't see one under Williams either. That we just approved.
Really?
Well, we know the person's already on.
Brady Williams?
Oh, yes, 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 a position title, I see, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No, yeah.
Yeah, position title, firefighter.
Yeah, Williams is okay, he's there.
Well, you could do this if you wanted to. The person's already here, so they have a position. You could vote to approve this conditionally on, and it doesn't even have to be John, but we can look up and see what position or current one is and fill in firefighter or whatever's pertinent.
Okay, all right, let's.
If that makes sense.
Assume it's a firefighter if it's minimum wage.
Yes, I am too.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Jacqueline Plantier coming in. We'll have that be filled in, but we presume it's firefighter, as needed, non-benefited, $15 an hour.
Retroactive.
Retroactive to January 2023.
Okay.
All right. Rini then Francine, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the last one here for now, Jeffrey Russell?
Jeffrey Russell, full-time firefighter, no, not full-time, firefighter as needed, part-time, non-benefited, also at $15 an hour.
And also retroactive.
And retroactive, right, to one, January 2023.
Okay, Rini, motion second, please.
So moved.
Francine, okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We held off on Russell Hatch.
We want to come back to Russell Hatch, Ed. We were a little confused on that one.
Okay.
Because.
We already approved the police department, right?
We did the police department, so, yeah, let's.
You want to keep going? All right, let's go ahead and approve Matthew Brulard. And there's two PCFs for him. The first one is the emergency appointment, transfer station, part-time, non-benefited, on-call at $15 an hour. And also a PCF for Matthew Brulard, transfer station, part-time, non-benefited, on-call at $15 an hour. So one's the emergency and one is the permanent.
Okay. We have a motion from Rini. Could I have a second?
I'll second.
Francine, second. Okay, could you have any discussion about this? Is this paperwork? Here, we have an application for unemployment. We've got a letter to Randall from the person.
And we have the application.
And the actual application. So it's no benefits, right? Less than 20 hours.
Right.
On-call.
And this is as of March. Okay, any, any questions? If not, could we have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that's for both PCFs, for Matthew Brulard.
Emergency.
Emergency appointment and the on-call transfer station. Okay, all right, and then one more, and then we'll come back to the other one.
Okay, so the last two are William Coletta. And this is an emergency and regular PCF for COA van driver, part-time, non-benefited, at 1650 an hour. And the same thing, like I said, emergency and then the regular position. And I don't know, let me just see the date on this.
3/22. This is the new hire?
Yep.
For the new, for the van driver, so this is someone that they've.
Yep.
Hey, I move to approve William Coletta as for the emergency and regular PCF as the COA van driver at 1650 an hour.
Okay. Francine, move second?
Second.
Joy, second, okay. Any discussion?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, both of those are approved. Thank you. All right, and then let us just circle right back to the first one on the fire department, Ed, Russell Hatch. We were a little confused on this one. It's a new thing here, so the comments here, this is under the fire department, but it says, using Russell's work experience in computer technology, we're adding equipment compliance coordinator title to his job as he will coordinate our website, social media, and electronics. And then there's a change in hourly status, and then there's a note about subject to approving a new pay scale. And then there's a job description for a social media public information assistant, so is this sort, it's kind of an added duty onto an existing job. Is it totally a new job? How do we classify this? Because this is kind of the first we're hearing about it, I think.
Well, the best person to fill you in from. Number one.
Yeah.
Number two is my interpretation is the fact that, okay, subject to Board of Selectmen approving new pay scale. You haven't done that yet.
Select Board.
Yeah, and actually, on this, on this chart here that says base pay rate here, there is that position, you know, in play, the equipment compliance coordinator and social, oh, sorry, and the social media public information assistant, so I guess it's partly confusing because.
What are you referring to?
The pay scale.
This pay scale thing? There's positions listed here.
Would yours also say proposed?
Yes, it does. It does, correct, yeah, but I'm just saying that those positions are here.
Because he's proposing them.
No, I got that.
Is my guess.
Yeah, so what we have, though.
Advertising this?
Yeah, so, but let me just finish my thought here. So what we have here is we're adding equipment compliance coordinator to his job as he will coordinate our website, so.
Well, they, they, they'll need to go on back.
So it looks like on this, what's confusing me, among other things, is on this chart, okay, which has not been approved, it's proposed. We have two separate lines. There is an equipment compliance coordinator and there is a social media public information assistant, so this guy who's a firefighter now, or EMTB right now. They're proposing an extra dollar an hour, which would be this 50 cents for each, so two other two other jobs and essentially, are essentially being proposed to be added to his existing job. I think we need to know a little bit more.
And the other.
This is extensive, too.
Did the PQB approve this job description?
I don't know, I mean.
Did they grade it and rate it and?
It doesn't appear that has happened.
I'm gonna suggest that we just table this.
Yeah.
I don't think we have any graded job descriptions for fire EMS.
Yeah.
It's just this pay scale.
But they don't, they don't approve the job descriptions? The PCF?
Well, normally it's.
No?
Normally it's EMS and fire. There's not a, there's not a whole lot of other new things here, right? This is a, this is a hybrid of something that we don't, we've not seen before.
I also just don't know whether or not there is a requirement that other people be considered for this as opposed to just an appointment. This is a hugely confidential job or appointment around social media and technology, and I just feel like we need definitely more information. I think we're all a little bit in the dark here.
So let's hold off on Russell Hatch, where, you know.
So I'm gonna move to table his PCF.
Motion to table by Francine, second?
Yep.
Okay, Rini?
Yep.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll bring that back at another time. All right, when we have more information. All right, so we've already talked about our Select Board meetings for the 30th and April 6th and 11th to start with. And at this point in time, we will have a short, hopefully, executive session this evening, so let me read the reasons for that. From the right page here, hold on. So the Select Board will be going into executive session per MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A2 to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town administrator, and MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Executive session minutes, February 14th, 2023. So could I have a motion to, what, adjourn the regular meeting and go into executive session?
So moved, and not to return.
And not to return, yeah. So, Rini, move.
I'll second.
Francine, second. All those in favor?
Aye.